Well, let's start. Good afternoon again, everyone. It's a special meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. It's Wednesday, April 21st at 4:32 PM. And I'll call the meeting to order and ask our city clerk to please provide a roll call.
Mayor Peake?
Here.
Councilmember Emilio?
Here.
Councilmember Coletti?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember McAdams?
Here.
Councilmember Padere?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Here.
All are present via Zoom meeting.
Thank you. Next, we'll turn to approval of the agenda. I recommend that we switch the items. Item B heard first, followed by item A. May I have a motion to recommend the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, Councilmember Tomlinson, your hands raised. Did you want to make a comment or?
Oh, I was just gonna make a motion, but it sounds like it's good to go.
Okay, excellent. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Thank you. Councilmember Coletti?
Yes.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Padere?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Mayor Peake?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. It's that amendment.
Thank you.
Aye.
The first item that we'll hear is the city manager performance evaluation with Mr. Harvey. And the second item is conference with labor negotiators regarding the city manager contract negotiations. And we have one member of the public. Ms. Giles, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I just want to make sure that my letter that was sent in March 3rd of this year has been reviewed again by council and mayor about my opinions and thoughts on the contract renegotiation with the city manager. Without going into all the details of that lengthy letter, I do not find that renewing Mr. Harvey's contract is in the best interest of our community. In summary, I want to just hit the seven points very quickly here. Noting these things in particular that I find to be unacceptable for city managers' performance. The grand jury's finding, the library expenditures, the effort to control media about what's going on in our city, the cannabis fiasco, the Pino's Grill lease negotiations, the transparency contract with Pro Media, and of course, the cornhole and kegger party on the closed street for Lighthouse. I know other community stakeholders have written in with their concerns. I think that this is the time to really take a hard look at the performance and look for a candidate who will be able to live and participate in our community with so many things happening during this transition from the pandemic and to our next quote-unquote "normal." Thank you, and I look forward to hearing your thoughts and evaluation of Mr. Harvey. And I will be on at 6 o'clock this evening. Thanks again.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Ms. Kendell, you're muted.
Thank you. I see no other one, no other persons in the waiting room or other public comment. Thank you.
All right. We'll now go into closed session and we'll start with item B. That's council and Mr. Harvey. And...
Mr. Mayor, this is Dave Laredo. I just want to confirm I was going to be logging off and then I'll be available to join whenever you wish.
Okay.
Was that your understanding?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And is the Assistant City Attorney with us tonight? I don't see her on the screen.
No, she's not. No.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, for clarification, am I making you host again of this meeting?
Yes, with some degree of trepidation, I'm gonna be the host. Councilmember Tomlinson?
Yes, Mayor. I remember a month ago or so where we talked about possibly having the city attorney listen into the closed session for this review tonight. So is that possible to have them participate?
Why don't we go into closed session and we'll discuss that?
Okay.
And let's...
You can call him?
Let's see. Just... One second while I get my phone.
Okay. Do we have a co-host volunteer?
Pardon? Councilmember Tomlinson? Yeah, did you?
Sandra asked if somebody would be a co-host and I said...
Oh, excellent.
Okay, I'm gonna make you host now, Mr. Mayor, and log off myself. Thank you.
Okay, and... Good evening, everyone. We'll start in just a minute. We just finished up the closed session. And I see a few council members will need a moment to join us, so you'd please bear with us. Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, 6:00 PM. This is a regular meeting of Pacific Grove City Council. And I'll ask our city clerk to please give us a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Peake?
Here.
Councilmember Emilio?
Here.
Councilmember Coletti?
Here.
Councilmember McAdams?
Here.
Councilmember Padere?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Here.
All are present via Zoom webinar.
Thank you. Councilmember Emilio, will you help us with the pledge of allegiance?
Stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of the agenda. And city staff have asked to continue item 11B. That's the master fee schedule to our next regularly scheduled meeting. That would be May 5th. So may I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
May we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Padere?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
And Mayor Peake?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Now, I want to welcome Karen Paul.
Hello.
Director Paul, thank you for joining us tonight, and you have the floor.
Do you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. And there's the video. Yeah, you can see me as well, right? Hello, good evening, everyone. I've been on the Water Management District Board for six months now, and I can't believe that I intended to meet with you, expected to meet with you much sooner, but here we are. I am very glad to be here with you. Going forward, I am here to meet with you as often as you would like, as often as useful to you. Could do it after the water board meetings or whatever frequency works for you. We can also invite Dave Stolt to give a presentation more in-depth at any time if you like. You probably know that. I've been, to update the community a little bit, I've been writing a monthly column in the Cedar Street Times called Our Water. You may have seen it. But I would love to have, you may have specific questions, city council members and members of the public. So please feel free to send them my way. I have an email address as a water board member, which I actually just got this address. It is simple to remember, divisionfour@montereympwmd.net. Okay, so tonight, given that we have just a few minutes for this item, and I know you have many other things on your agenda, I thought I would address very briefly the two most important subjects, the ones I think that are uppermost in people's minds about our water. One is the water supply, a very brief water supply update. And the other is a little bit of an update on Measure J. So, and then I'm happy to take questions. Any questions? And I will do my best to answer them. If I can't answer them right away, I'll get answers to you. Water supply update. So as you all know, we have a moratorium until we get a new water supply. And then only then will the State Water Resources Control Board lift the moratorium. I'm sure I'm telling you things now that you don't know, that you already know, but just to set the stage. And lifting the moratorium is not automatic. The State Water Resources Board will have to be satisfied that we've got a reliable new water supply, and then they lift the moratorium, then the CPUC will also do the same. In the meantime, owners, I understand that there are owners of vacant lots in PG who would like to build and are on a water waiting list, and they want to know when we'll be able to build. And you're not gonna, you're not gonna like the answer. The owners of vacant lots who want to build, who do not have a meter, water meters on their lots, will just have to wait until the moratorium is lifted. And this, that will be at least three years away. I mean, really, frankly, best case scenario is that's three years away if we get a new water supply. And I'm gonna say more about how we might get there in a minute. There's a slightly difference. If you have a water meter and water and you just, that is a somewhat different situation where you might be able to buy water entitlement credits. But if you don't have a water meter, we have to get this moratorium lifted, so we have to get a new water supply. Two ways we might be able to get it, as you know, Cal-Am would like to build a D-SAL plant in Marina. Very controversial, as you know. And then there's the other option is to expand Pure Water Monterey. And you've heard a lot about this, I'm sure. I've written about it in the Cedar Street Times and many other people have written about it. Okay, in my opinion, the D-SAL plant in Marina that Cal-Am wants to build is not viable. It's not, I'm not the only one who thinks this. The short version of this is it's unlikely they can get a permit from the Coastal Commission for a lot of reasons. Some of the reasons they might be able to address the problem, but probably not all of them, probably not. And on the other hand, Pure Water Monterey expansion does not need a coastal permit. It can be built in 24, 20 to 24 months from the time of approval. So we need one or the other of these projects, not both. And this is where, I have a few slides to show you. I think they were included in your packet. And I'm going to attempt to share screen, my screen, which I have not done before. That's not what I wanted to show you. Where's my file? I'm gonna open the slides that we distributed in your packet. No, that's not the right one.
Ms. Kendell, could you?
Yes, thank you. I was just going to tell Ms. Paul. Okay, great.
Got it. Sorry for that delay. So I wanted to show you this slide, the last one in your packet. This is from, all these slides are from presentations of the Water Management Board recently, at recent board meetings. Dave Stolt, as you may know, did a very, very thorough study of supply and demand in late, came out in late 2019, in 2020, and then was updated. He recently updated it with using the study that Ambag does periodically, I believe every two years, to try to estimate the growth, the population growth and housing and so on. So he took their most recent estimates, projections going out to the future, and he basically reran the numbers with the new information. And that's what this graph is based on. So the yellow line you can see is the amount of water. You can see...
Okay, we're not seeing your slides.
Oh, dear, maybe.
Okay, we can see them now.
Is this the one, Ms. Paul, I'm sharing on your behalf?
Oh. So... It says this will stop other screens sharing. Do you want to continue? Are you showing the slide with the graph, the last slide?
Yes.
Okay, so I will just continue mine. Okay. Well, all right. Okay, do you have, I don't know if you have the one I'm showing or Sandra's copy. Can you all see that graph saying market absorption of water demand?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So the yellow line is the the, as the demand starting from now and projected out to 2050. And then the other two line, you can see the the top line is the amount of water that the D-SAL plant, assuming it was built and operational, could potentially supply the capacity of that project. And then the brown line is the pure water expansion, the amount of water you would have with the pure water expansion. And as you can see, either one of these could meet our need according, if this demand estimate is correct, both projects could meet the need, but we definitely don't need both. In fact, both of them would produce more than we need in the early years with the D-SAL plant producing much more. So now Cal-Am doesn't agree with these estimates, but I personally think they're quite reliable. So we need one, but not both, and that is why the proponents of the D-SAL plant have been opponents of the pure water expansion, because if we have the pure water expansion, we don't need the D-SAL plant. But that, in my opinion, is the fastest, the least expensive, and the most environmentally kind solution, and it may in fact be the only possible water supply option we have. So we need, we have two things we need for that to happen now. Monterey One Water has to certify the supplemental EIR, which they recently updated for the expansion. And they're gonna vote on that on Monday, at their meeting on Monday, as you probably know, 6 o'clock. They're gonna vote on whether to certify the supplemental EIR for expansion. And then, once that's done, there's got to be a water purchase agreement so that the expansion can be, the project can be financed, either a water purchase agreement with Cal-Am, which, you know, is sort of the obvious solution, or if that's not possible, if Cal-Am is not willing, some other solution, we have to find some other buyer or arrangement to finance the plant. So I encourage anyone who's really interested in this to attend that Monterey One Water meeting and express your views. If, I would hope that you would encourage them to certify the EIR. Okay, now, I just take a minute to give you an update on Measure J. Sandra, if you could show us slides two and three, please. Thank you. Yeah, this, so can you go to the previous one? Yeah, okay. So this slide gives you a quick recap of what has been done. The next one is looking forward. So this, okay, as you know, Measure J passed in November 2018. It required a financial feasibility study, which was done. There were public hearings about it. The Water Management Board reviewed the results. It had an EIR done, even though it was probably not really required, but they decided to do it. They did the EIR, they certified it. Cal-Am promptly sued the district, and that lawsuit is pending. And they also put together a proposed or preliminary operations plan. How the district, if it acquired the water system, would operate it. And the idea is simple, is that if it does acquire the water distribution system, it will at least initially operate it the same way Cal-Am does until it learns from experience what needs to be changed, what it wants to do better or differently. They did a preliminary appraisal was completed quite some time ago. And as we move forward and get closer through more steps in the acquisition process, the appraisals are actually two appraisals, one for the land and one for the utility infrastructure and capital assets and all that. And those will have to be updated. Sandra, can you move us to the next slide, please? The next slide will show us what's ahead in the very near future. So this green shows that the Water Management District has to get permission from LAFCO for two things. One is a minor adjustment to the Water Management District's boundaries, so it can include about 58 connections, existing connections that are currently served by Cal-Am but are outside the, just the boundaries of the district. So we want to include them so that if the district takes over distribution, can serve all of those customers that Cal-Am's currently serving on the peninsula. So boundary adjustment. And the other thing is basically permission to become a retail provider. And, you know, that could be a difficult process. LAFCO is having a hearing on the, the district has submitted a proposal, the application, to do both of these things. And LAFCO is going to have a hearing on this also on Monday at 4 o'clock. It's a, it's a public information session. Everyone's welcome to attend. This process, LAFCO has asked for some additional information. It's very likely to take until August. Unfortunately, I mean, I wish we could speed it up, but it's my understanding that that's not possible. And it may be, it may be, you know, I don't know how some LAFCO members may be resistant to giving the approvals that we want and need to go forward with acquisition. And then there are a few other things. There's, there are issues about property taxes that have to be resolved. We have ideas about how to do that. I won't get into it now, but that's one other task ahead that we're gonna be working, we are working on already. And then the findings of public necessity, that's basically, this is required for eminent exercise of eminent domain authority to the public acquisition. Findings of public necessity means essentially findings that it would be in the public interest, the public would be better off in various ways if the water system were operated by a public entity rather than the current private entity. So the board will, currently, our plan is to try to have that done. There's a hearing required and probably useful, and we hope to have that accomplished by the end of the summer. And also, as I mentioned, update the appraisal. So we, assuming we get the approval we need from LAFCO by August or thereabouts, and these other tasks finished, we then would make an offer to Cal-Am. I really wish, in my mind, you know, a wonderful scenario would be if we could sit down and negotiate with Cal-Am based on appraisals, buyout agreement, but unfortunately, that is unlikely. So far, Cal-Am has said they don't want to sell. So, so that means that we would have to, the district would have to use its eminent domain powers to file a lawsuit to, basically, for court order that Cal-Am would have to sell the system to the Water Management District, and that would probably take a couple of years. So, but this gives you an idea of what's up ahead for the next, you know, several months, anyway. So I'm gonna stop there, and I welcome your questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Paul. Council members, any, any comments or questions? Ms. Paul? I'm not seeing any right now, but your contact information is clear. It's on the Water Management District website. Thank you very much for coming here and I look forward to hearing more updates with you in the near future.
Thank you, and please tell me what information you want and when you want it.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have one more presentation, and I see Mr. Skido is here from Monterey One Water. Our, welcome, Paul. How are you?
Thank you, Mayor Peake. I'm doing well.
Are you our presenter? I see another name here. Let's see, Mike McCullough.
So Mike is witnessing, you know, just to make sure I don't stray off the path too much, but I will be presenting.
All right, excellent. Glad to see you.
So... If it's okay, I would like to share my screen and scroll through a brief presentation.
Excellent. Excellent.
Okay, is it okay to start, Mayor Peak?
Yes, please. Forest is yours.
Mayor, council members, thank you very much for the time and opportunity to present tonight. My name is Paul Shudo and the General Manager of Monterey One Water. And. What I want to discuss is our proposed monthly rate increase that was approved by our board last month unanimously. To go out as a prop two eighteen notice to all of our customers and be effective as of July first. So. I apologize, but this is going to be a scrolling presentation, so it might be a little slower than normal. For those of you that don't know who we are, and of course, Councilmember Smith is on our board representing Pacific Grove. We were formed in nineteen seventy two. We do have ten member entities, therefore ten board members. And we serve everything from, you know, Moss Landing in Castroville to the north, Salinas, and then the entire peninsula. From, you know, Marina, Seaside, San City, Delray Oaks, Monterey, Pacific Grove. We are an infrastructure intensive organization in terms of, we have a treatment plant that was in that first picture you saw. That can have a capacity of almost thirty million gallons a day. And then we have twenty nine pump stations with about thirty miles of force mains or pipes. That ring much of the bay bringing wastewater to us. We are staffed twenty four seven by. State certified operators as required by our permit, so we maintain our level of service that is expected by us and certainly our customers. I will try to, I'm going to go through this relatively quickly. I note that you have a very long agenda tonight and obviously open to questions. Although I'll be talking about our rates, when you receive bills. What we generally see is Monterey One Waters monthly rate as well as the local cities rate. So for instance, Pacific Grove has an add on rate. To maintain their collection system, as do all the cities and districts within our boundaries. Another point of note is. Although, and you know, although we're going to be talking about monthly rates, we do bill every two months, so. The rates a little bit look a little different than what you normally see in your mail. This also just represents all of our member entities, and I think most of you are probably familiar with those. So this year, oops, sorry, this year, what do we do with the revenue that we get, which is primarily from rates? A lot of it is capital reinvestment. So we have a thirty year old treatment plant. That is in a wastewater and marine environment, as well as pump stations that do deteriorate over time, even with appropriate maintenance. So what you see before you on the left and right side are a couple of projects at our treatment plant. And then, of course, the middle picture is one of our pump stations and you can see the proximity to the water. And I think. Probably many of you that walk the red trail may even recognize that location. Happy thirtieth birthday to our treatment plant. This is just a great overview of the infrastructure that we have. When you look at the value that all of us own, all of us in the in the service area. It's about seven hundred and fifty million dollars worth of infrastructure assets. So it's a large number that we continually have to reinvest in. And it is incumbent upon us to make sure it is maintained well and reliable. So why a rate increase? You know, I was, and we'll see this a little later on, but I think Pacific Grove was. Very responsible and smart years ago, increasing their rate to invest in your own sewer system. Certainly, I wish we could have followed you sooner than we are doing, but what our board is recognizing is we need to invest in our infrastructure. There's obviously, as all entities, there are personnel obligations. And we would also like to see a greater investment in our reserves. For future projects as well as having a stronger financial standing, so our bond rating is better. When we're talking projects, we're talking over the next ten years, over a hundred million dollars worth of capital investment. Some of it we can do pay as you go, but a lot of it may be debt financed. So we want to make sure that our reserves are in a healthy position. So our bond rating is high and therefore interest rates are lower. So those are the three main drivers for what you're about to see here. But I wanted to. Make sure everyone knows, because Ms. Paul had mentioned the Pure Water Monterey Project, which, you know, we are very proud of and working diligently to continue. But what we're talking here is specifically our wastewater charges. We establish separate enterprise funds for wastewater, for our recycled water for agricultural irrigation. As well as the water recycling for potable use, the Pure Water Monterey Project. So there's no subsidies going back and forth. Between these three discrete enterprise funds. I want to make that clear. And I apologize if some of these slides you cannot see in their entirety. So I guess this is the. No pun intended, the money slide. This is showing what our proposed monthly rate increase currently is, and frankly. Those prop two eighteen notices should have gone out or have gone out to all of our customers and you probably have seen them. Our current monthly rate for a standard residence is twenty four dollars and fifty five cents per month. As you know, we bill every two months, so you normally see something closer to fifty dollars per month. The proposal is to go to thirty six dollars for next year, forty three in year two or year twenty two. And so on down the line. Ultimately, this five year prop two eighteen sets a maximum rate over the five year period of fifty four ninety five. The individual city rates or district rates for their collection systems are added on top of this. Just to give a little history, and many of you already know this. We went, we Monterey One Water went approximately twelve years, actually, it's not approximately, it's exactly twelve years without a rate increase. And fourteen years out of seventeen without a rate increase. So if you go back there to what is represented as nineteen ninety. The blue line is what our actual rates have been and how we've increased over that timeframe. The green line establishes about a five percent increase per year. So what. From a utility management perspective is what I think is good business is small regular rate increases. That gets us up to that thirty eight dollars if we were to have done that. So truly. What these next five years are is to get us up to a level that would be consistent with those small regular rate increases had we done them in the past. Now, this is not blaming decisions of, you know, past boards or past management. Certainly, they were done for specific reasons and, you know, and they were appropriate at that point in time. We just find ourselves. Needing to invest more significantly in our in our infrastructure at this point to maintain our level of service, protect the environment and protect people. So that's sort of the backstory of why we're here today. When we look at wastewater rate comparisons, that's something that I think is important to do, just to make sure we're in the ballpark. Some of these are comparable agencies, very similar to ourselves, that you may or may not be familiar with. Others, we tried to pick some that are local. What you'll note there is on the green line is the combined rates of Monterey One Water and the City of Salinas, City of Seaside and City of Pacific Grove. For twenty one twenty two fiscal year. All the other rates for our other comparables are for twenty twenty one. So it's likely those will go up. Even with our proposed rate increase, we're right in the ballpark and frankly. Most of our member entities are far below the median or far below the average of all of these. Once again, I think it's it's great that Pacific Grove made the intelligent decision to invest more in their. Collection system and frankly, we're trying to follow suit and I think it's the right thing to do for our customers now and our customers in the future. So we are asking for public participation. A, like I said, a notice went out, it's prop two eight two notice to all of our customers. And they can, if they choose to. Vote against effectively, effectively vote against this rate increase by filling out a form and sending it back to us. They can also do it via email or come to the public hearing on June seventh and voice their concerns. As you all know, probably, if we get fifty percent of our customers plus one, the board cannot enact this rate increase. And we would have to go back to the drawing board. Certainly, we hope that doesn't happen, hence the reason we're trying to do this outreach. As best as we can to all of our member entities, other public groups, you know, Rotary, Kiwanis, Chambers and so on. Just to make sure that we can convey why we're doing this and what the need is. With that, I can, we'll certainly open up for questions or if Councilmember Smith would like to make any comments, and I will stop sharing at this point as well. Mayor Peak, I think you're muted still.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skido. Appreciate it. And of course, we'll go to council. Comments and questions and starting off with our, or I should say, your board member representing Pacific Grove, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Paul, for the excellent presentation. I really appreciate you coming out tonight to inform us and. As well as our residents about the reasons behind this rate increase. I'm not going to try to read you that presentation because it was really well done and you're a tough act. To follow, but we appreciate it. Infrastructure, personnel and reserves makes sense and thank you very much.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Shudo, for being here this evening. So, you know, as you know, with the pandemic, we have a lot of households that are struggling financially. A lot of unemployed. With the rate increase, will you be implementing an income qualified program to. Help with bill assistance and or some sort of financial assistance?
Councilmember McAdams, thank you so much for bringing that up. I owe you, because I forgot to mention that in my presentation. Yeah, absolutely. So our board, let me just back up a little bit. Our board was, is very sensitive to the public. Not just in Pacific Grove, but our entire service area. And so they deliberated and discussed significantly. They directed staff to bring back about five rate scenarios that they. Whittled down frankly to three rate scenarios that were ultimately voted on. So there was. Significant discussion. Now, specifically to your point, we are developing a customer assistance program. And that we are scheduling to be in place by July one or end of June to be sort of. In line with this potential rate increase. Now, what that will look like, we're still developing it, but ones I've been associated with in the past. It's generally, you look for the county or united way to determine eligibility based on a number of criteria. Because we don't want to be arbitrarily or otherwise determining that. And then there'll be a. Some funds that we allocate into a pot that we can provide to those customers in need. It's not something that will be every billing cycle for the next five years or anything, but certainly when there is a need, there's going to be an upper limit on the number of times it can be accessed. By a specific account. But it will be administered specifically through our customer service department. And Mike McCullough, who's on the line, is our Director of External Affairs that will be also reviewing and. Developing such a program. But thank you for bringing that up because that is, that is critical when we're. Trying to implement a large rate increase like this.
Thank you. I really appreciate your gracious answer. And just to follow up on that. Operational wise, have you seen an increase in either accounts that are behind on bills? You know, I mean, is that fairly substantial?
Yes, thank you for that question as well. If we go back about a year ago, so when the pandemic first hit all of us. Our delinquencies, which we define as sixty days or more past due. Shot up to about, they're normally at about two percent. You know, there's delinquent accounts out there, that's standard. It shot up to about thirteen or fourteen percent. That. That loss of revenue was so substantial last year that we actually implemented a hiring freeze. And a furlough for all employees, for myself, through the entire organization. We furloughed a number of hours per week. That just got lifted two weeks ago. It has gotten better, but we are still seeing elevated delinquencies to the tune of the the last month was at about five point four percent. So nowhere near that twelve thirteen percent, but more than double what we've seen in the past. And what it means to us is frankly, a revenue hit of about two million dollars. So that is substantial. When we don't have the reserves as identified, I identified in the presentation. We don't have those reserves or rainy day fund to help us. So it was something that we keep a tight eye on. I. I get reports from my CFO on a monthly basis, what our delinquencies are at and also, you know, what that is in representing dollars. So yes, it's of concern.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Shudo, for your presentation. Very helpful. So I know you started off by saying that this is not connected to the Pure Water Monterey. Expansion, but having said that, if the Pure Water Monterey expansion were to happen, you are going to get more water, you're going to treat more water. Will that, is that accounted in this five year forecast?
The reason I'm hesitating, Councilmember, is I'm just thinking of the structure of the agreement. If pure water expansion moves forward, you're absolutely right, we're going to get more water into our plant, but the way we structured it is. A lot of it is existing wastewater. So we all pay for that, what I'm going to call primary and secondary treatment, that's standard wastewater treatment. The additional treatment to make it into potable water will be paid for by Cal Am and the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. Some of the water going through that primary and secondary is from Blanco Drain and Reclamation Ditch. And I know we're diving into a little different topic here. But in terms of paying for that primary and secondary. That is paid for by the Pure Water Project. So what we try to do is allocate those costs directly to Pure Water. And hypothetically, we put three hundred acre feet in a month, we bill the Water Management District for that and they pay us. And so that's how. We try to keep these as separate buckets or separate enterprise funds. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Shido, and I just, I just want to make comment. Excellent presentation and. It is a partnership between the city, Public Works Department and Monterey One Water. And as, as you already mentioned, at least once, the sewage collection system, the pipes in Pacific Grove. Are all maintained by our Public Works Department with the exception of a couple of lift stations along Ocean View Boulevard. And from there, it's Monterey One Water. So we appreciate the service of your organization and being here tonight.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, and if any of you have questions, please feel free to reach out, whether it be about this increase or. As the, as Ms. Paul mentioned, anything on Pure Water Monterey and or the potential expansion. So thank you very much.
Right. Good night. All right, we now, moving on, report on closed session. I see by the city attorney, but I think the report outs are mine. Is that right, Mr. Laredo?
That's correct, because I did not attend the entirety of either of your two matters on closed session.
Okay, and, let's see. The report out, we, we heard item B first, that's the City Manager Performance Evaluation. And at this time, the city manager had already received council's performance evaluation. And during the closed session, he provided his thoughts, his feedback to council on the receipt of that performance evaluation. And that, that concludes the performance evaluation for the city manager at this, at this time. And then, item A, which was city manager contract, employment contract. Council discussed that. We received guidance from our city attorney on what we can discuss and what we can't discuss in closed session. And then, council had a discussion, provided direction to three, what I believe is called labor negotiators on the agenda. And the, the three are myself, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Emilio. And the next step is to provide our council's thoughts to the city manager. And the next time, we'll talk about the employee contract that council will be in, in one month, the second meeting in May. And that ends my report out. I'll turn to Mr. Harvey. Do we have any staff announcements? Oh, we have the litigation report. I'm sorry, Mr. Laredo, I skipped you this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, good evening to council and members of the public and staff. This is going to be very short. As promised earlier, the city council did direct that action be filed against the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration under the, to make certain that everyone is aware of exactly what's going on. An entire copy of the declaratory relief action is appended to the packet, beginning at page 31. It's 10 pages, it's rather short. I know that some of you that are interested in this type of thing, want to know exactly what is the case number. I can't tell you what the case number is at the moment. The Sacramento County filing system, it takes a while for a case to be assigned. I'm hoping that we'll know what the case number is by the end of this week or early next week, but we're at the court's mercy, they use a Dropbox process. But this matter has been filed. We had previously shared a copy of this with the Department of Tax and Fee Administration. And this is entirely a declaratory relief action. And that, we'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey, do we have any staff announcements?
Mr. Mayor, we only have one, and it's really more a housekeeping matter. You may recall at the last city council meeting, there was an announcement of a distorted picture for the television-watching audience. I just want to report that that issue has been resolved, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember announcements? Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to acknowledge the beautiful magic carpet that is currently in bloom and thank the volunteers, our volunteer coordinator, and Mr. Kent Speed for his diligent work. It is amazing. I would encourage you to head down there, and it really is the nicest that I've seen in several years. Also, yesterday, in the news, as we all know, that the police officer who murdered George Floyd was found guilty on all three counts. I did a little research, and since 2015, on-duty police officers have shot and killed more than 5,000 people. And of those, seven have been convicted of murder, including the one police officer that was convicted yesterday. So, obviously, there's a lot of work that needs to be done with regards to social justice and racism. And we do have a call for applicants for our task force on diversity and inclusion. So, I would encourage any residents that are interested in serving and helping our efforts as a city. We would appreciate your applications, and our city clerk has those available. Thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. I'm the rep on MST, and they have a saying that MST cares. And they're providing the seniors at Sally Griffith Center free passes to get their vaccination. Also, Monterey County has over 50, just over 50% vaccinated right now. And I also wanted to mention that the Meals on Wheels out of Sally Griffith Center for homebound seniors, 71% of them were homebound clients of low income, and 32% were living at or below the poverty level. And they delivered meals to them. And the, the other thing which I, I think the mayor and Ms. Hannah and Mr. Harvey was on, I listened to the US Department of Treasury in regards to the implementation of the American Rescue Plan, which we're receiving, and a theme which I got from them was they're still working out the rules about the money we'll be receiving, or all the cities and counties and receiving. However, a couple of themes which I heard was they're working out the rules, but they're looking at possible infrastructure, police, public services. And we're not sure about putting it back into reserves. Mayor Peake, did you happen to hear about kind of the same theme on there?
I think we're still waiting for the details, as you point out.
Yeah, still waiting for the details. Or Ms. Hannah, if you're on, do you have any comments on that?
This.
Councilmember Amelia, through the mayor, I think you pretty much covered that we are waiting for additional information. There was a signup process where we needed to create some IDs to access a funds, and staff has completed that particular process, but no specifics have been announced yet on the funding.
Thank you.
I, I have a couple of announcements. Well, first a question. We had a vaccine clinic scheduled for the 27th, and I think that was put on hold because of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. Do we, do we have a vaccine clinic coming up?
Mr. Mayor, if we could maybe call on our fire chief to respond to that question. Chief Panholzer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that question. We are still having, having to keep that clinic on hold. I anticipate, based on the action of the EU, to now move forward with continuing use of the J&amp;J vaccine, that we will probably get that same authorization this Friday, in which case, then we will move forward with, with holding the clinic. If we do not get that authorization, then we will have to cancel the clinic and set, set it for a future date. We may also alternatively be able to provide Moderna vaccine during that clinic, as we just received some shipments on that.
All right, thank you, and we really appreciate the vaccination efforts by, by Monterey Fire Department, your help. Just a couple of other things. Tomorrow, we have a recreation board meeting, and next week, a traffic safety commission meeting. And at the last meeting, the last council meeting, Mr. Harvey described that City Hall is open for business. So, literally, City Hall apartments at City Hall are open, and the library is now open, limited hours, and museum is open. And rumor has it, there might be some outdoor tours at the lighthouse in a month. So, I'm not sure, do we have any? And we're having some recreation department activities as well. So, things are, are opening up for us, so please check our website, as what's open. And Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a brief announcement that the Point Pinos Coastal Trail Project construction has begun this month. And reading from the website, the city's website, it says, "Construction will occur in phases and is anticipated to span a year. Please expect temporary phased closures of turnouts and/or detours during the construction." So, just want to acknowledge that this project's finally moving dirt, and, and, and wanted to also congratulate the mayor on his efforts towards this. Thanks.
We'll give the efforts to our Public Works Department, the kudos for them moving this forward. All right, we'll now go to general public comments. Do we have any, anyone wishing to provide comment to council tonight?
We do, Mayor. We've got a few hands raised. Inga Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Sandra. Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad that Monterey One Water is wanting to build up their reserves, but meanwhile, Pacific Groves are going down. And certainly, as a senior homeowner, fixed income, living in PG, my reserves are gone. And I really, he praises Pacific Grove for the way they handled their raise for their sewer fund last time, another 218, which they, they pretty much know that not enough people send those dissent notices in. I mean, it's a really hard row to pass a 218 for any citizen. So, it's just interesting that I, I think that Pacific Grove, which overcharged us, then decided to keep the money, the council at the time did, and then has lent out the money from our sewer fund for the unsustainable local water project. So, it's a really hard pill to swallow, and yes, I will be sending in a dissent notice. I thank Jenny, Councilmember Jenny McAdams, for bringing up the fact of that we seniors need some relief. And I appreciate all Shudo's presentation. But the fact is, you can't bleed blood from a turnip, and this turnip is drying up. So, please keep that in consideration with all your other rate increases. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Louise Ramirez, you have the floor.
Welcome. Hello, Piazza. I am Louise Miranda Ramirez. I am the tribal chairwoman for Alone Coast to Noah and Esselen Nation. I come to you today to talk to you about Pacific Grove. As you all are aware, Pacific Grove is an extremely sensitive and sacred part of Alone Coast to Noah and Esselen Nations homeland. Ocean requests that the city council acknowledges that our sites are important and that we be included in projects affecting them, especially those such as the Noah Building. And we ask that the land be protected, that we be consulted and involved, and hope that you will reconsider the wording of the resolution you hope and put that up. We want to be involved, and we hope that you will do that, take the time to speak with me and hear the words of my council. So, that's it. I want to say thank you, and I hope that you will consider that.
Thank you.
Wendy Giles, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm calling this evening to comment on the effects of the city eliminating the budget for crossing guards at Robert Downe and at the Forest Grove and PG High School intersection at Sunset and Congress, that very busy five-way stop. At some point, those crossing guards were eliminated out of the city budget, and PGUSD, I guess, was supposed to figure out how to add those in. And there were some discussions about Billy Hawkins' old position, which is a police position. It's not a rec department position, as Michael Logan was a longtime crossing guard, as well as his mother, Mary, for many, many years at Robert Downe. So, so what's the effect of all that? When school went back in session in late March and here in the beginning of April, there were no crossing guards available to students. And the impact of so many drivers unaware of kids on the streets and everything, it's really quite dangerous. I am really quite disappointed that the city handled this dismissal of those positions in the way that it did. It is really, really unfair and unfortunate. I want to thank Councilmember McAdams, PGUSD Barbara Martinez, and Carolyn Swanson, the trustee from the school board, for jumping in and reaching out to Officer Amanda to hold an onsite training for parent volunteers who are acting as the crossing guards now until this can be remedied. It's very complicated, and I am really, really, really disappointed that the city is being managed in a way that's something as essential as the safety of kids walking to and from school, which is one of the main reasons parents choose this community, is the walkability to schools and to have that as a safe option. And it is just really, I'm really, really upset about it. And I'm happy to volunteer, as many other parents are. But again, that's a fail from the city. And I hope that you all will really take some time to consider these types of decisions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Okay, good evening. I want to first start out by thanking Councilmember McAdams. You got me?
Yes.
Okay. By thanking Councilmember McAdams for bringing up the George Floyd matter. I think it was a wake-up call for all of us in this country that we need to do something about our policing. And I heard a really interesting story today on the news, and that was that the original report, press release of the police department in the George Floyd case to the press the very day he was murdered, didn't even mention any police involvement in his death whatsoever. If the public had not had input by way of video, If the public had not had input by way of video, I don't think we would have seen justice come to George Floyd yesterday at all. Now, I personally had an experience recently with the PGPD, and it really was shocking to me that the misconduct that occurred, both intentional and very negligent, which caused very much damage to a young woman in Pacific Grove, who was pretty helpless and vulnerable, not myself, but a friend of mine. I was shocked to find out in Pacific Grove that our manner of dealing with police misconduct of this type is to let the police police themselves. That can no longer be the case in our country. That is why two weeks ago, I asked each and every member of the city council to do nothing more than to put on the agenda a discussion in public of whether or not we should impanel a committee. And I want to say this again, it's an exploratory committee, not a committee to oversight, to do police oversight, but a committee to explore the possibility of establishing a committee of that size, that type. With that view in mind, I would suggest that you have members of the council, members of the public, members of the police on this committee. They can look into what's been done successfully and unsuccessfully other places. They can look at what issues this committee should be involved in, whether or not we should even have this committee, what the committee would be doing and how often they would report to the public. We can no longer have a policing system in this country that does not involve public input or transparency. If we haven't learned anything else, we learned that in George Floyd. We need to take down the blue wall. We cannot let the bias of police, who police themselves and cover their behind, make it look bad for other policemen, and most of them are good ones, but also to damage the public in a place where they no longer have a voice. Please, put it on the agenda. That's all I'm asking for. And I think that you are going to be on the right side of history.
Thank you.
Kim, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know that we have just passed the peak of our pupping season. And as of today, we have 52 babies on the beach of harbor seals. And so if you guys haven't got a chance to go down there and see them, now would be a good time around the Hopkins Marine Station and the Fifth Street Rookery. And I just want to let everybody know. And if you're out there kayaking, just remember to stay out of those coves, because our moms are pretty sensitive and are easily spooked away from the pups. But right now is one of the cutest shows we have in town happening on our beaches. So if you get a chance, go down and see them. They're really adorable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, regarding the, uh, work at the coastal trail, um, it's encouraging to see that work started. However, I'm concerned that the trucks taking rocks and soil out of town are using Ocean View Boulevard. And I'm wondering, is there not an alternative such as Holman Avenue or Holman Highway that would, um, be a better way of transporting materials, heavy materials out of town? And, um, let's see, there was one more point. Oh, I hope a lot of the rock materials that are being taken away are going to be salvaged because over the years, I know that Pacific Grove is going to have a need for that type of rock in rehabilitating, restoring some of its stonework walls. And it would, it's, it would be sad to see that thrown in a dump and just completely discarded without an opportunity to reuse it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, this is, uh, just a second. Hi, this is David Dilworth. Um, thank you, Mayor Peak and council members. Uh, I want to especially thank, uh, council member McAdams for bringing up the George Floyd issue. And I'm going to start with a question. Um, does, let's see a show of hands of everybody who realizes that there is a, an eviction ban, both in California and federally. That means we cannot have someone evicted. None of our friends or family can be evicted right now, at least until the end of June. I, I raised this issue because recently a local peninsula police department helped evict a woman in violation of these bans and assisted the landlord in having her evicted. This is a young woman who was thrown out in the street without her clothes, without food, with her puppy, and she had absolutely nowhere to go. And the police relied on an order from the court that was denied. The court actually wrote on it that this request to have her evicted was denied. And this police department helped it happen. I'm calling, uh, to ask the city council to do the same thing a former councilwoman, uh, Goldbeck asked you to do, is to agendize the idea that we have a police oversight board in Pacific Grove. The American Civil Liberties Union has asked, been asking for this for years. And I think we all realize that this is, it's time to do this. So I would hope you can put this on the next agenda, and I will look forward to hearing your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I see no other hands raised.
Let's move to the consent agenda. And I've got two items to pull, as usual, item 9A, local emergency actions. We'll hear that immediately following the consent. And I'd like to pull item 8B, uh, water entitlements. Let's see, the full title is promissory payment related to entitlement water. And that would become item 12D, 12D as in David. Are there any council members wishing to pull any other items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, are there any? Oh, council member Coletti.
Um, based on public input, uh, item 6C, resolution in support of reuse of the Noah Building.
All right, and let's, uh, move that to 13D. At the end of new business, 13D, David. Now we'll turn to the public. Does public wish to pull any other consent agenda items?
Susan, you have the floor. Susan, you have the floor.
This is just for pulling consent agenda items that have not already been pulled. But why don't we go move on?
I'm going to move on, yes. Craig Riddle, Craig Riddell.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, this Craig Riddell, um, I, I would ask, uh, I understand you're pulling 8B. I'd ask that you, um, move it closer to the agenda. I know there are people that are going to speak on that tonight. Um, and if possible, I'd like to be able to do it before 12A or B, or where it was that you moved to.
We have a very full agenda tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Lisa Chiani.
I, I would like to pull item, um, 9B, the agreement with CoPro Media.
And let's move that to the end of unfinished and ongoing business. That would be 12E as in eagle. Ms. Kendell, are we finished with?
Yes, sir. I see no other hands raised.
Looks like, okay. May I have a motion to amend or to approve the amended consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And a vote, please.
Council member Coletti.
Aye.
Council member McAdams.
Aye.
Council member Tomlinson.
Aye.
Council member Peduri.
Aye.
Council member Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Peak.
Aye.
Council member Emilio.
Aye.
And for clarification, um, the motion passed at seven zero to amend the, or to approve the remainder of the consent agenda with those items pulled. And I wanted to make sure that I clarified this second, the person who seconded that motion. Was that McAdams?
Yes, Sandra. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll just briefly recap what we've just approved. We have approved a resolution of intent to levy an assessment for the Hospitality Improvement District. Ms. Frati, thank you. And as the same for the Downtown Business Improvement District. We've adopted a resolution authorizing city participation, I should say continued city participation in the Monterey County Abandoned Vehicle Abatement Service Authority. Thank you, Ms. Francis. We've received a core revenue status report for March. Thank you, Ms. Frati. I've, uh, provided a, a regional meeting report. Council member Emilio has provided a Monterey Salinas Transit Meeting Minutes for March. We've, uh, rescinded and reauthorized the resolution authorizing filing of an annexation application for Mission Lennon property site at 801 Sunset Drive. It's a minor correction to an MOU. Thank you, Ms. Hunter. We've confirmed appointments of Susan Myers to the Beautification and Natural Resources Commission and Eric Upman to the Economic Development Commission. Congratulations to both of you. We've received minutes from the Beautification Natural Resources Committee from January, from Mr. Go, Planning Commission Meeting Minutes for March. Thank you, Ms. Hunter. And now we're on item 9A, local emergency actions. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is the time on the agenda when we come forward with any actions related to the pandemic or the shelter in place order that require council ratification or where we want the council to be aware of a certain item. Uh, as you know from the agenda report, there is one item that we are responding to a council inquiry on from our prior meeting, and that is related to in-person city council meetings. Uh, consistent with the governor's, uh, announcement that, uh, assuming certain metrics are met, the state shall open up on June 15th. That is our target date to try to, that date or after, convene, uh, potentially in-person city council meetings, should the city council decide as a body that they want to do that. Um, there are options, of course. There could be hybrid meetings. Um, so, uh, we, we could, um, come back with some uh, potential strategies for the council to consider if there's an interest in that. Of course, you could also just continue convening Zoom, uh, council meetings as well, if you choose to do so. Um, I just wanted to make one more comment. Uh, as you indicated, uh, Mayor, earlier, city hall and, uh, city offices are open. We, we have been open since Monterey County moved into the red tier. Uh, I'd like to point out that we are the only peninsula city at this time that is open for in-person business. And with that, uh, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go out for public comment. Do we have anyone from the public wishing to speak to this item?
I see no hands raised for public comment, Mayor.
Council comments? Well, I'll just, uh, add that as Mr. Harvey described, um, there needs to be some discussion. Uh, there's a number of unknowns, uh, to figure out how we're going to have council meetings and, uh, boards, commissions, and committee meetings, um, in person. Hopefully, we're, we're moving there in not too distant future, but we're going to have to figure out how, how we do this, um, and get some, get some agreement. So everyone stay, stay tuned. It doesn't seem like the path forward has gotten any less complex, uh, this day and age. And, uh, thank you to staff for opening up city hall. I've been over there a number of times since it's been open. And it doesn't seem like many of the public realize we're, we're open for business. But, uh, we are. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Harvey and your staff for that. Right, I'm not seeing any council member hands up, but then that was a report out. So we'll move on to item 11A, ordinance to amend PGMC Chapter 2.04, adopt rules and procedures to govern ex parte contacts. Mr. Harvey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and bear with me while I attempt to share my screen. The city clerk will help me if I fumble here, but I'm going to try. Give me a moment here. There we go. Uh, Mayor, you were able to see my screen successfully? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, yes, uh, this item was continued from your last meeting. This is an ordinance regarding ex parte contacts and disclosure requirements. Uh, so, so why have this ordinance? Uh, a couple of reasons. Uh, number one, it would allow for the public to know of council member engagements. Uh, and two, it would, uh, provide some clarification of the rules and establish a process. Uh, what would be required if the council decided to move forward with this? Uh, this would only apply to the adjudicary decisions before the city council, uh, those where there is a license or a permit, um, provided, as an example. It would not apply to legislative matters. Um, and it would require disclosing, uh, contacts made on these types of matters, including, um, what was discussed, who made the contact, and, and then the sharing of any significant written material. Uh, the disclosures here could be made orally, or there could be a written submission, either way. Uh, and with that, I'm going to conclude, uh, my very brief presentation and give it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, now, here from the public, public comments on this item.
Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. I think, uh, this is a great step forward. I've been involved and been going to public hearings, uh, since about 1970. And, um, over And over the time, over the course of time, the adoption of ex parte disclosures has been really, really important. And I think what would really be helpful with this one is if it included the city manager's ex parte meetings for the same things. In other words, if the city manager is meeting with an applicant for a project permit or something along those lines, I think it would be really important for the city manager to also disclose who he's met with, why he's met with them, who made the contact, as well as the city manager and other people. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Inga Dimer, you have the floor.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. I think this is a small step in the right direction, very definitely more so. I remember going to the Coast to Commission to get our parking back and lobbying, literally having a meeting and lobbying with Mark Stone, who was a commissioner then, and he certainly disclosed that we, as a group from Pacific Grove, lobbied him that way. And yes, it was nicely favorable that we got our residents-only parking back. And yes, he disclosed it, and most other government entities do. And it's high time Pacific Grove did. And I'm also going to echo Anthony Chiani's comments there because it really leaves a wide open gap. And the person who uses this kind of lobbying the most, I believe, is our city manager, and it would be very helpful for the citizens of Pacific Grove to have him included in ex parte communications. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have no other public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, we have a hand just raised. Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Yeah, I just want to echo my support of the ex parte disclosure measure. It's an important, important step toward transparency. And it, besides informing the public, it, I think, makes the council members and hopefully city manager more aware of the kind of communication that they're involved in and what impact that has. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, getting back to council for council discussion.
Mr. Mayor, we have one more hand raised.
Okay.
It just popped up. Jane Haynes.
Welcome.
Jane Haynes, you have the floor.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I want to know how this would have applied last summer when four council members met with Mr. Arminasco on behalf of apothecarium. Would that have been a legislative matter that would be excluded from disclosure? Because we didn't know it, the public didn't know it, but there was an ordinance coming up, which, of course, is legislative. But a permit was the ultimate goal, and that, of course, is judicatory. So my question is, would this have required the disclosure of those four council members meeting with Mr. Arminasco on behalf of apothecarium last summer? I don't know the answer.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mayor.
I'm going to close public comment and open it up for a council discussion. Councilmember Cluddy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be real brief. I think codifying a requirement for ex parte disclosures is a fantastic idea. I think it's about time, and I look forward to supporting it. So good job on getting this before council. And again, it's something that, it just should be, I mean, it's already highly encouraged, but we need to codify it, and I think we should do that tonight. So, thank you.
I also support this measure. It's a step in the right direction. It doesn't cut off or, in my mind, constrain community involvement or discussion and input to council on a wide variety of actions that are being contemplated. But it is narrowly constrained to what must be reported, and I think it clears up a number of, or establishes what needs to be done as described by our city manager. Councilmember Smith.
Your Honor, I'm going to take the opposite position here. I'm not going to support this ordinance. I just think it adds, in my view, it adds layers of complexity to disclosures that we don't need. I think that there's going to always be questions. In fact, there was a question raised, a public comment, what type of action did we take? And I think those things are going to pop up frequently, and for that reason, I think it's overly complex. Most, a lot of our council members are not attorneys, so on their own, they're going to have to try to discern these things. I just, that's an added layer of work that is required. And I think it could lead to traps for the unwary. Not, no intention of trying to do something wrong or trying to withhold something, but it just may happen on its own. I also, I actually disagree. I think that it will stifle public input in some manner, just in the sense that the requirement could have the potential to do that, and just the potential of that, to me, I can't support. Because I do desire public input on matters, whether they be legislative or whatever other the categories, quasi-judicial or quasi-legislative, all the different categories. And finally, I believe that we have, we have rules that we follow currently. I've made disclosures in the past, sitting on the planning commission and also on the council, and those disclosures were primarily on judicial, quasi-judicial-type matters. And so I think that we, as a council, have already been doing these things. And so for that reason, for those three reasons, I will, I will just.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the public that discussed this. And this deals, the sex partay deals with the council, and I'm against this also. I believe if we live by our values as a council, which deals with honesty, integrity, and respect, I think that we should use common sense if we're out in the public, and it deals with anything that may come back to us. But I do want to bring up one item. Happened approximately, well, maybe a year ago plus. There was a lot split and by a citizen. And the mayor actually asked, did anybody have ex parte dealing with the citizen? And there was no answer on it. So we already have, as Council and Smith said, we always have layers on this. But I go by our values. Make sure when you're out in public that you keep honest, keep the integrity of yourself, and respect the wishes. And that's my comment. I'm against this.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. For me, this is a no-brainer. I mean, the residents have been really calling for transparency. And as a council, you know, we have committed to that. So just like a lot of other cities who have codified ex parte, which is the law, I mean, it makes it a clear process. A lot of residents, a lot of council members, and perhaps future council members, may not understand what ex parte means or what you're supposed to do and how, you know, how you're supposed to act. So for me to have this in our city code, there will not be any questions or mistakes, or, you know, I didn't know what we're supposed to do. I mean, it just really lays it out. So this doesn't hinder any regular conversations or normal communications with our residents. But it does, you know, it does keep us mindful when we are being approached by a contractor or an applicant, et cetera. So for the sake of accountability and for the sake of transparency, I one hundred percent support this. And, you know, for me as a council member, especially when I was new, you know, I mean, I had to read and sort of find out for my own. And I recall having, you know, a conversation with our city attorney, and it's also in some of our trainings, you know, how you handle ex parte communications. So it would have been much simpler to have it in our municipal code for current reference and especially for future. So, thank you so much.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm in the opinion that in order for me to make the best decision, I should be, in a sense, like knowing as much information as possible. And I kind of like go with the views that it could be, I mean, I don't want to add complexities to a process which is already in there. And I don't know what all rules will apply if I'm talking to anybody. And frankly, I want to talk to everybody. So with that in mind, I'm going to oppose this. Thanks.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thanks, Mayor. So I, I just want to ask a little bit of a question because I feel like, kind of like Councilmember McAdam said, you know, when we were new and we had to understand how ex parte communication worked. It was, we learned about it from League of California Cities. We got some advice from the attorney. I remember Mayor Peak, the first time I had to make an ex parte communication reveal, I wrote it down, and he made sure that I, you know, did it right. And then I announced it during the council meeting. And so the way I'm looking at this is, this is just writing down what we already do. And it's not going to change any ability to talk to folks. I mean, if you, you know, I was one of the council members who spoke to somebody about the cannabis. That was during a legislative part of what was going on. So ex parte communication, you know, wasn't needed at that time. If and when I was to be making a decision on a permit, which was not the way it was going to go down, you know, anyway, then I would have disclosed that. So I think keeping track of who you talk to, and ex parte, like my understanding is it's not a bad thing. You can talk to folks and have, just keep a record of it and then be able to share that so that the, in an open setting, the public is able to know who and what kind of conversations are informing our decisions. So, you know, unless I've got it wrong, I don't think that this is, this is just writing down what we are already doing, and it's not going to change the way that we, you know, the values and the things that we do and the way that we do our job. So that's how I read it. Can I, is that, is that a fair statement? That's a question I have to the group. And unless it's different, I mean, I do support writing it down and putting it in our municipal code and making it something that's easy for new council members to follow and for the public to follow and to understand what's expected of us and how we go about our business.
Councilmember McAdams.
I forgot one other thing, Mayor. You know, that being said, I would like the city attorney and city manager, when there are items on, you know, and I think they do this already, but call attention to certain items that may end up falling in a adjudicary role so that you can, you know, help us do our job the best that we can so that we're keeping records properly.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to make a motion.
Please.
I move we introduce and hold a first reading of an ordinance to amend Civic Grove Municipal Code, Chapter two dot oh four, council to adopt rules and procedures to govern ex parte contacts and disclosure requirements and direct publication of a summary of the ordinance as approved by the city attorney.
I'll second, and I'll also thank Councilmember Tomlinson for clarifying the issue at hand. It is a requirement that was simply codifying and saying, we're here, it's in our municipal code, and there it is for clarity.
Ms. Kendell, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Thank you. Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Pedri?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries four to three.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on. Item eleven B, the master fee schedule has been continued to our next regularly scheduled, regular meeting. So we'll move on to item C, ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-one operating budget pertaining to the library. Ms. Godwin, welcome, if you're with us.
Yes, I am.
Welcome again.
So this is simply an amendment to the budget because we received, the library received a lovely request from a loyal, longtime user of the library. And so we needed to show that the money had come in, and then we are requesting to use some of those funds for, one, the two new clerks that we're hiring for the months of May and June until the next fiscal year comes in July. And also for some materials that were necessary for us to open up the library, such as some furniture and some screens, air purifiers, that sort of thing that we needed for to be COVID safe. And that is all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
I see no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have any council comment on this very welcome news? Councilmember Emilio.
Yes, I would like to just say thank you, Ms. Godwin, and it's great news for the library in Pacific Grove. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
May I just move approval at this time?
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
If there's no further discussion, may we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember Puderi?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We'll now move to item 11D, ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2021 operating budget pertaining to the capital improvement plan. Ms. Hallaby, welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Just want to confirm that you can all see my screen.
Yes.
All right, the item for you tonight is an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2021 operating budget for items specifically pertaining to the capital improvement program. The recommendation associated with this item is to introduce and hold a first reading to amend the ordinance, I'm sorry, uh, reading of an ordinance to amend the budget and direct a publication of a summary of the ordinance as approved by the city attorney. The CIP serves as our guiding document to drive the city's larger maintenance and asset management needs. And as we implement the CIP throughout the year, it may require amendments to reflect changes that arise as we implement. Amendments are always brought forth to the city council for review, consideration, and approval. And that is why we're here tonight. Staff is proposing increasing the budget for three of the approved CIP projects. They are noted on the screen as well as in your agenda report. Um, and I'll get into each of these in the subsequent slides. But I do want to note, all of these additional increases are from non-general fund sources, so there is no impact to the general fund. The first project that we'd like to increase the budget for is our street rehabilitation project. This project was approved as part of the current year's CIP with a budget of $868,000. And this was derived from a combination of Measure X, Senate Bill 1, and general fund money. The project is much needed. It addresses two of our heavily trafficked roadways, both of which are in dire need of rehabilitation and are considered poor condition. You can see them pictured on the right-hand side of this slide here. During the project engineering phase for this project, our video inspections revealed that there were some sewer infrastructure improvements that were needed prior to addressing the actual road surface. And this is really best practice to address the underground infrastructure prior to doing any road rehabilitation because it allows us to have the optimal service life for the roadway once we rehabilitate it. So here's a quick snapshot of the project funding. Again, the previously approved allocations for Measure X, Senate Bill 1, and general fund monies. And I do want to note that general fund allocation helps the city meet maintenance of effort requirements in order to be eligible for continued Measure X and Senate Bill 1 funding, as well as that additional allocation for the sewer infrastructure improvements at $485,000. Um, if approved, this will bring the total project budget up to 1.3 million. The sewer fund does have sufficient fund balances to support this change. The second project is our community center gutter fascia and downspout replacement project. This, again, was approved as part of the current year's CIP with a budget of $50,000 from Strong Disbursement Fund. This project addresses some of the feeling roof infrastructure at the community center. And equally important, it really prevents a much more costly and much more extensive repair in the future. And again, there's just a photo image here of kind of the deteriorated gutter. Um, it kind of illustrates the need for the project. We went through a competitive bid process and we still need $23,000, um, in order to facilitate the repairs. So here's a quick breakdown of the project funding. If approved, the additional allocation will bring the project up to $73,000. The Strong Disbursement Fund does have sufficient funding to support this change. And the last project is the beach access steps maintenance project. Again, another approved CIP project, $20,000 budget derived from the Make and Do Donation Fund. This project really addresses safety. Um, and it was a project that was identified through the city's draft risk assessment plan. And you can see on the right-hand side, again, just another image to kind of highlight the project. There's some rebar sticking out here, uh, concrete missing from the steps. An additional $8,000 is needed to facilitate the safety repairs. And here is a quick breakdown of the project funding. If approved, the additional allocation would bring the project total funding to $28,359. The Make and Do Donation Fund also has sufficient balances to support this additional allocation. And lastly, I just want to quickly touch on some of the impacts. So you'll see on your agenda tonight, the award for contract for the street rehabilitation project, as well as the community center gutter fascia and downspouts projects, award of contracts are on the agenda tonight. Failure to approve the budget amendment may result in project cancellations and/or delays. And it also may impact our ability to meet maintenance of, maintenance of effort requirements to be eligible for continued Senate Bill 1 and Measure X funding. Again, because our street rehab project harnesses that general fund monies, which were required to spend by the end of the fiscal year in order to continue to receive Senate Bill 1 and Measure X funding. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment?
I currently do not see any hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Emilio?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm, uh, for this project. And, um, I think it also, uh, also discusses our goals of complete streets and, and infrastructure. Uh, thank you very much, uh, Ms. Hallaby for the presentation. And I think that, uh, I'm, I'm all for this, uh, project.
I had a simple question, Ms. Hallaby. The beach access steps, what is the project code? We're trying to find that in the original CIP. I didn't find that.
So it was actually a carryforward project from fiscal year 1920. Or sorry, yeah, 1920, that was carried forward to 2021. So I don't have it in front of me, but it should be.
Okay, that's why I couldn't find it. I was just looking for, anyhow, project codes are good things for us to know. Uh, Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, thank you, Ms. Hallaby, for your presentation. Just wondering with regards to the stairs at Lover's Point, has, has it ever been looked at to, to include some sort of ADA accessibility? Um, whether it be a ramp or a lift, anything like that?
Maybe if I could jump in on this question. Uh, the city is currently, uh, developing a detailed ADA transition plan, which will be addressing areas like that and, and really the entire city. And we'll be coming to the council, uh, with that. And we'll be trying to systematically hit all of those areas. So that is, that is in the works, Councilmember. Um, and that will be something you will be seeing in the next few months.
Great. Thank you. And, um, so I definitely, um, support these projects. And of course, you know, once you, uh, either rip up a subfloor or a street, I mean, you're just never going to know what's underneath. So, um, understandably, I, um, you know, I understand this amendment and, and support it. Thank you.
Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you, Mayor. So I certainly support, uh, our ongoing, uh, maintenance of effort and keeping that in good standing for maintaining our streets. Um, I guess the one I'm focusing on is the fascia and downspout and gutter replacement and repair at the community center. So it looks like we were budgeted for approximately $50,000, and now we're asking for close to 75. So that's a 50% increase. Just curious to know what drove that increase exactly? Was, was there some underlying condition that was discovered that wasn't first understood? Um, you know, I certainly, water damage is a, is a big thing, so we want to avoid it. But I'm just curious to know what, what the increase was actually due to. Thank you.
Councilmember Coletti through the mayor. Uh, we believe that the increase is actually due to the fact that both aluminum and lumber has significantly increased in cost, as well as the fact that that total project budget includes a 15% contingency. Um, so any, you know, we might not use all of that additional 15%, and if not, it goes back into that fund.
Well, so it's a materials cost, $23,000 increase in material costs alone?
So no, the, the, we're, so we estimate the project budget at the start. So, you know, that's our best estimate.
Right.
And then, so that's an additional 13,500 that we're estimating is because of increased lumber and aluminum costs. The remainder is that project contingency that we may or may not need to tap into when we actually get to construction and start removing the aluminum and seeing the water damage, et cetera.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I support, uh, this amendment to the budget. Uh, I think it's noteworthy that, that, uh, none of these are hitting our general fund. And so that, that's, that's a very good thing. Um, as we try to get our reserves in order and come out of this pandemic strong. Um, so I appreciate that. Also, um, I appreciate um, continuing to support our maintenance of effort and, and staying vigilant about that on all of these issues. And lastly, um, I like these, these projects because they are part of our city infrastructure. And, um, that's always been important, uh, to me, to continue to work on our infrastructure, have it be on ongoing, um, an ongoing guidepost for us and an ongoing goal for us, uh, to, to do that and do a good job with it. So I think this, all of this is good and, uh, I, I, I support it. So thanks a lot, uh, Ms. Hallaby for the report.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Thank you, sir. Um, and I, I support all of this, uh, these changes, but I have a question about the maintenance of effort. So I, I remember we had to spend a certain amount to unlock the SB 1 and, um, uh, the funding there. And so if we're going to go another 485,000, uh, can we somehow make that be our maintenance of effort for '21, '22?
So the Councilmember Tomlinson through the mayor, the maintenance of effort requirements have to be through the general fund. So that's where that $300,000 comes into play.
Okay. All right. Just trying to get creative. Thank you. I support this and I'm happy to make a motion.
Please.
Okay, um, I move that we introduce and hold a first reading of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 budget and direct publication of a summary of the ordinance as approved by the city attorney.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Puderi?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Carry seven zero.
Thank you. It's almost eight o'clock. I recommend, suggest we take a break. Uh, returning at eight, 10. It's about 13 minutes.
Mr. Harvey, would you like to start? I want to thank our city attorney who very quickly and capably put together both of these ordinances in a very short timeframe. These rules basically codify, codify our outdoor dining rules we've had in place. Once the pandemic and the shelter in place order went into place. We have both an urgency and a non-urgency ordinance to expedite the implementation. And this impacts parklets, sidewalk dining, outdoor dining in tents on private property, as well as food pickup. Again, as I indicated earlier, these are consistent with our successful parklet program. We're recommending through these ordinances to allow for continued business recovery by waiving fees and hearings. And consistent with council direction at the last meeting, these ordinances allow for sound amplification during the hours of dining after 10 a.m. and before 10 p.m. And so with that, I don't have anything more, and I'd like to turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I do not currently see any hands raised, Mr. Mayor. Have a couple just popped up.
Welcome.
KBK, you have the floor.
Welcome.
You'll need to unmute yourself. KBK?
Okay. Hi, I'm Kathy Curtley, and as someone who lives very close to several of these parklets, I would just like to say that the noise is already unbearable from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. every Friday, Saturday night. My spouse and I wear noise-canceling headphones in our apartment during this time. I would like the council to carefully consider the impact that this has on everyone who lives close to one of these parklets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Chiana, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, council and, and mayor. I think this is a good idea for a short-term basis, but only short-term. I think the long-term solution here needs to be done. Using a lot of community, public participation and input through live modeling at the, at the streets, at the sites to figure out the best solutions for both the merchants and the dining public and for the nearby residents. I think it's really important that the previous speaker spoke about sound. External sound effects are really important to not just the nearby residences or residents living in town, say upstairs in a, in a multi-use building. It's important in terms of the ambiance of the site, the ambient sound noise. Sound testing should be done. Modeling needs to be done. It's been done in the past in many communities over the years. I think you need a competent facilitator to come in and work with the community to develop a solution on a section-by-section part of the city. I think you need to be looking at other opportunities for greening of the alleyways and little nuanced areas. And so I think it's a great, I think, idea. I think Pacific Grove could use this kind of Main Street application and design influence. So, but do it on a short-term basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mo Amar, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Member of the City Council. First of all, thank you for your service. You, you are appreciated. As you all know, I've been in the chamber 29 years, and I have never seen a younger generation show up downtown as a direct result of the outdoor dining. It, it is really critical that we attract the young families and the young people who live in Pacific Grove. The parklets have changed the demographics of the people who are visiting downtown. Yes, we do have some seniors that live around and, you know, with all due respect to the previous two speakers who spoke earlier, and I'm not discriminating against anybody's age, but I really feel that finally Pacific Grove is being recognized as a destination that is not only attracting people from out of the area, but the people who reside in our hotels, survey after survey, we've heard from our visitors that say, you know, we don't want to go out of Pacific Grove. We want to stay in town. We want to spend our dollars locally. And one thing that's unique about Pacific Grove is predominantly the people that own our restaurants actually live in Pacific Grove, so they are residents and their livelihood is on the line. We would really appreciate the community participation, input, feedback. And I stated this at the couple meetings ago. The people of Pacific Grove have already voted by the amount of the cash register that trains at those facilities. Secondly, the hotels in town are the largest tax contributor to the city of Pacific Grove, followed by the restaurants. And I cannot stress enough how important it is to cater not only to the seniors of Pacific Grove that are my age, you know, 65 and older, but to cater to the young generation who want a place to hang out, enjoy the music, and yes, party and have a good time and respect the neighbors. And again, I stress, I thank you very much for your service. And let's keep in mind that Pacific Grove isn't only senior citizens like me, but there are younger people that are looking for something to do. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor. I, two more have just popped up, just in my. Kim, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, I would like to see this just on a limited basis, too. First, first off, we need to consider the water issue. After listening to Karen Paul earlier, we have to remember there is an allocation of water for each of these. And in the beginning, it was for indoor dining only. So now if we continue to open up and we open up completely, but you're doing indoor and outdoor dining, now you're using more water. The second issue is still, it's a little dangerous driving down lighthouse with some of those, particularly the one at Fountain and Lighthouse. Either we need to put a stop sign right there because you cannot see the pedestrians stepping off the curb because it's being blocked by the parklet. So something kind of needs to be changed there. Either pull back one parking space so you can actually see the pedestrians and make sure pedestrians are not walking out and around those parklets and into traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Monterey County Weekly, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Jeez, hi, it's Eric Cushman. I, I don't know why I'm on the business account.
Hi, Eric.
Hello. So representing the younger demographic that most of, uh, my wife and I and two of our friends from PG who are also in their 50s, went out to dinner on Friday night and had, had a wonderful meal inside and acted and, and just commented how it seemed like a return to a normalcy. And then we came out on the street and it was 9:15 and the lights were on and there were people in the street and there was music playing. And we just hung out and put some money in the basket. And earlier today, I texted a friend of mine and I said that I had gone out to dinner in PG and I came out and it seemed like I was in Copenhagen. And he was like, oh, that's cool. I was like, well, it was legitimately cool. It wasn't PG cool. It was legitimately like a lively, urbane Friday evening. And so I, I would just And so I would just recommend approval of the urgency ordinance to continue with both the music and the parklets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inga Dimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have nothing against the parklets. I am absolutely for just the emergency for now and rethinking it otherwise with more input because on Monday I happened to drive up Fountain and, boy, that Janini one on the corner, Kim is absolutely right. You can't see around it. You don't know if there's a pedestrian there. And with the construction on the one side, yeah, you can see with a car if they're coming down lighthouse, but to get around there, you don't know if you're going to hit someone or anything else. I mean, people don't just, it's hard to see around that corner. So I would suggest a little redesign of that. It needs some help. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Council comment? Discussion? Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the city manager and city attorney for being so prompt on returning this. So at the last council meeting, we did discuss, I, Councilmember Smith and Tomlinson were were absent, but we did have, like, I thought, a really great discussion. We received a lot of community input and, you know, really, for me, when I go downtown in the evening, you know, it's lovely to see the lights on and it's it's really nice to see the people out. I mean, this is giving a different life and a different feel to our downtown that I think we've desperately needed for for a long time, so. And then with regards to the water, if I'm not mistaken, the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District, their board did extend the urgency ordinance for another year. And that does allow continued outdoor dining. However, the comment is correct. It doesn't mean that we can open up 100% capacity inside and now also be serving this extra capacity outside. So that is definitely an awareness and something that the city would be mindful, needs to be mindful about. But I I'm going to support the urgency ordinance. The parklets are there and they're offering music. So, you know, I think we need to continue that. There is that precedence there. And I don't see a harm in it. I, you know, the fact that it's been a year and there has been one noise complaint, I think speaks for itself because, as you know, Pacific Grove, come like 7:45 p.m., we are very quiet. So I think the music that has been offered has been tasteful and accommodating. You know, I mean, they're accommodating to understanding that there is a mixed use down on lighthouse. So I am going to support the urgency ordinance and you know, as far as the other ordinance, I do, you know, I do think that we are getting this community input by how busy and successful the program is. And yes, I wish that we could do a whole downtown revamp plan and have noise, you know, sound engineers and, you know, have all of this robust way to collect and gather information. But the fact of the matter is, is that you know, we are still in a pandemic and we're not guaranteed that we're not going to have to shut down indoor dining again in the near or distant future. And so, you know, for me, the parklet program is really that lifeline that our restaurants need. And I see that it trickles down to the other businesses, you know, when when Red House Cafe is on a waitlist or Poppy Hall is doing their pop-up donuts, you know, people are milling around and it is bringing more people to downtown. So I want to support this in my capacity and and, you know, go ahead and support both. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Padori?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to echo Councilmember McAdams' comments, and I personally think this this entire meeting agenda over here has been laid out perfectly from what we discussed last time around, gives us all the options, lets us know what to decide. Now I'm in support of the recommendation. We should do one, two, and three. We should make this into effect immediately because this is, again, like, prime time for all the restaurants and the more we encourage folks to dine outdoors, make sure that we're offering the public what they're looking for, the better off we are. And I'm also glad to see that the music related matter has also been addressed here. So that's great news. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I'm really excited to hear that last Friday had kind of a Copenhagen feel out there in the downtown. I'm only disappointed that I wasn't able to get out there, and I feel like I missed out on that. I like to see and hear about the vibrant downtown, and I think we have a lot to offer down there. And so I'm certainly supportive of this and hope that we can move it forward and continue to support our local restaurants and support our local economy here in Pacific Grove.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Thank you, Mayor. In the interest of time, I'll keep it brief, but I absolutely support this 100%, and I can make a motion. And I like everything about it.
Councilmember Emilio?
Yeah. Dino, with that, I'm considered not a senior citizen, so I want you to know I really enjoy the downtown and the music, so. I'm supporting this.
Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, parklets certainly have been helpful. And you know, thanks to the chamber and the bid who brought forth the idea to begin with. I I do want to ask a question, though, of the city manager. Some restaurateurs might be under the impression that they have an ongoing right to keep their parklet under this temporary framework that we're establishing, but it's my understanding that there is no promise to carry forward access or the ability to maintain a parklet past this urgency ordinance. Is that correct?
Councilmember Coletti, through the mayor, that's correct. There is no tenure with an encroachment permit. And that's the way it's been before and with this program. This ordinance sunsets within, excuse me, at a year's date. And I would, you know, just add that the council could certainly decide before that time period if they wish to continue this. But you're correct, there are no guarantees, and certainly staff doesn't offer guarantees. We just simply present the program as it is.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. I've heard some people thinking that they have a expectation to keep it. And I think a year, as you mentioned, does make sense. As Councilmember McAdams mentioned, the water district did extend their suspension of rules for outside dining, which allows that to continue for another year. And getting to the point you just made about looking at this in the longer term as far as establishing a parklet or some kind of outside dining ordinance, I think we should get started on that. Absolutely. And like, yesterday kind of thing. This needs to go to the Traffic Safety Commission. This needs to go to Planning Commission. I think the ordinance would likely be in our zoning code, so they certainly need to weigh in the Economic Development Committee, Commission. So there are a lot of there are a lot of recommendations that council should receive from our boards and commissions about how a long-term solution or implementation might look. So I would I would personally ask that that gets started on right now, or as soon as possible, rather. And you know, the sound issue was brought up by someone who called in, and I'm sympathetic. But I do want to read, or I would like the city manager to kind of maybe expand on the provision in the parklet ordinance that says sounds that become audible or disturbing to a person or persons beyond the boundaries of the dining area or parklet on which the amplifications occur are impermissible. So I guess maybe we could let people know how they would perhaps engage the city through a complaint or how enforcement of that provision in this ordinance would be implemented.
Councilmember Coletti, through the mayor, we always encourage the public, anytime there is an issue with noise, especially noise in the evening, contact the police department, and the police department will respond. And if there's something that needs to be done, an officer will take care of that matter.
Okay. Thank you very much. I I think that does it for me. Again, I think this parklet program has been helpful and been a lifeline, so I will support this.
And a question, Mr. Harvey, about what's your overall impression of code compliance? How are we doing on parklets in general?
Thank you, Mayor. It's something that we're working on every day, every week. You know, what happens oftentimes with outdoor dining, and it's not necessarily always the restaurateur's fault. You know, people shift chairs or shift planters or shift tables around to accommodate their particular party. And in doing that, sometimes they neglect to move a table or a chair or a planter back to its position and there becomes an access issue. We're very aware of that. It's something that we respond to when we receive complaints, but we also try to monitor it on an ongoing basis. So it's something that we have to be aware of and mindful of with this program.
Well, I thank you for that, and I hope that the restaurateurs understand that and that the city doesn't need to come and monitor them frequently. That's not helpful for anyone. Oh, and I forgot, and I do want to thank yourself and Mr. Laredo for the quick turnaround on this item. That's much appreciated. And I totally support the comments from Councilmember Coletti. I know this emergency ordinances do not preclude having a longer-term, more comprehensive look at outdoor dining and in particular safety. And maybe we could get started on it. When we're talking about safety in parklets, the intersection of Lighthouse and Fountain come up all the time. Maybe we could look at that in the shorter term. And then let's see, oh, and noise as well. So we'll have to figure those two out amongst other things. Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. And with an urgency ordinance, I was wondering if the city attorney could chime in. I am thinking that we would need to have two separate motions and votes. If he can elaborate on that, please.
But you are absolutely correct on that. I would ask not only two separate motions and two separate votes, so a motion on the urgency ordinance and then a motion on the non-urgency ordinance. Both are time-limited. Each of them would only last for one year. But this is following the best practices that the League of Cities suggests in terms of how to ironclad our approval.
Thank you.
What I suggest is, Councilmember McAdams, if you would provide a motion on the urgency ordinance and Councilmember Tomlinson on the non-urgency ordinance?
Sure, happy to do that. So I move we adopt an urgency ordinance to adopt temporary outdoor dining rules in response to the COVID-19 pandemic health crisis.
Second.
To the maker of the motion, does that also include the declaration under item two?
Yes. Thank you. And that would be declare that the urgency ordinance should be an emergency measure and take effect immediately.
Second again.
May we have a vote, please?
Councilmember McAdams? Aye. Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti? Councilmember Padori?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
I move that we approve the first reading of a non-urgency ordinance to adopt temporary outdoor dining rules, set a public hearing for second reading and direct publication of a summary of the measures as approved by the city attorney.
Second.
Vote, please.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Padori?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item 12A, check register reports. Councilmember Coletti?
I believe this was pulled from the consent agenda at our last meeting by Councilmember Emilio.
Correct. That is correct, and I've already had-
Well, this, okay. So, Councilmember Coletti, so it's your agenda item today?
Okay. So I just want to make sure Mr. Emilio or Councilmember Emilio had said what he needed to say.
Well, we're going to circle back to-
Okay, I thought that was the procedure. I'm sorry. Well, so I'm guessing each of us have a check register and receive a monthly statement. The each of us have a checking account, rather, and receive a monthly statement. And the check register is simply the city's monthly statement showing how the public's money is being spent. This is a, this is a, check registers are a typical way of jurisdictions providing that information to the public. Carmel does it, San City, Seaside, Ambag, Monterey One Water. All these jurisdictions provide this resource, and Pacific Grove used to. And I'm simply bringing this forward for council members and the public so that they can they can gain insight into how our money is being spent and on what. And there was some discussion at the last meeting about how that how that would be presented, whether we'd want to put it on an agenda. Perhaps we'd want to put it on the city's website. I could go either way. You know, at the last meeting, we also discussed how contracts and leases, et cetera, basically legal documents would be getting shared with the public and how there would be some kind of repository on our website so that people can gain access to it. You know, this could easily be, check registers could easily be placed on the finance department's webpage. But it is essential, it's almost, in my mind, it's mandatory that we provide the information in a very accessible and easily-read format so the public knows how their money is being spent. It's just fundamental core transparency and accountability issues. And and when I was campaigning, a lot of people said, "Hey, where did the check register go?" And I said, "You know what? That's a very good question." So here I am, asking that very question now. And I said, you know what? That's a very good question. So here I am, asking that very question now, and proposing, proposing that the, that the city provide that information once again. And I'm happy to take any questions that, that you might have. Thank you.
Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Yes, Inga Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, unlike Councilmember Emilio, I am a senior citizen. And I'm from the age of Aquarius, and I say, let the sun shine in. We did use to have it. It's time we had it again. It would offer, I'm not good with the computers navigating government sites, but this would be incredibly helpful and cut down on my public records requests. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening again, councilmembers and mayor. I think this is a fantastic idea. The, as I'm just listening to it, the notion of being able to go to the city without bothering anybody there and find this information will answer so many questions. I like the idea. With regard to contracts and agreements with consultants and contractors and subcontractors, I've often wanted to be able to see those, and I think they used to be attached to the agenda reports. So for example, there was this project down at Lover's Point called The Cave. And I wanted to look at who was doing the work, and what were the specifications, and couldn't find it. And so it took a long time. I had to bother Public Works, had to bother the city clerk. And gee, if I could have just gone there and found the contract, found the information, it would have been a lot simpler, taken a lot less time of the city's time and money. I think being able to look at check registers would be like a clearinghouse of information of where is our money going? As Mr. Coletti said, or Councilmember Coletti said, it contributes to this notion that the city has been trying to achieve for years, and that's transparency. Please, please do it.
Thank you.
Wendy Giles, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. With so much emphasis on transparency, this would be a very valuable tool to keep things transparent for the very people that are contributing to this budget. And since we already have a transparency media consultant, we should also have complete transparency with finances that we're paying for. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jane Haynes, you have the floor.
Welcome.
I support the check register publication, too. I find it very reassuring. I thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Your Honor.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Coletti, for bringing this forward. To see, you know, the check register and the monthly expenses is very helpful, and since our last extremely robust council discussion at the last meeting about the check register, I did go to the OpenGov website two times, because the first time I got too frustrated, and the second time I was not successful as well. The site is difficult to maneuver, and I did watch some YouTube videos, but there is not a way to bring up a monthly register. So in comparison of just looking and reading the actual check register, you know, I was, it was easy to understand, and I really appreciated being able to familiarize myself with all of the vendors that the city uses. And that is not information that I had seen before, you know, except for what comes, you know, like big contracts. But as far as like everyday utilized vendors, or even smaller vendors, it was really interesting to read through and, and be able to sort of connect all these dots. We do receive monthly core revenue reports. And so it really makes sense to receive the other side of our financials, which are the expenses. So again, thank you for bringing this. I really enjoyed looking at the two months of the registers and look forward to, to reviewing additional months. Thanks.
Now, question for, for staff, Mr. Harvey. This, these check register reports, does the finance department ordinarily create a check register, or was this, the reports that we saw today unusual and not, not created on a routine basis?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. We don't normally create these reports, but the information is available through OpenGov.
Okay, so it is, these reports are very time-consuming and difficult to, to extract from our accounting system?
No, it's not so much that they're time-consuming. If you, if you'd like to, I don't, I don't know if you're looking for our opinion on the report, or just a time assessment.
Time assessment.
It's not, it's not a hugely impactful time assessment on the, the department.
Okay, yeah, thank, thank you. There was, there was a lot of, a lot of pages in this check register. I, I thought it was, some of it was interesting. I gleaned from it that as of last month, we were still paying Avala Construction for the library renewal project. So I learned it right there, and I think it's a good thing. This is a report. So this is not an action item for council. Just wanted to point that out. But I like the direction of the transparency. However, this could be provided in the most expedient fashion with the least amount of, of staff or cost to the city to make it available to the public. Any other council comments on this? Councilmember Tomlinson?
So Mayor, are we, I understand it's a received a report, but are we now, you know, providing direction to the Administrative Services Department to start putting this into their habit pattern of making this check register and a part of the core revenue reports?
If you'd like.
That's what I'm hearing. So I, I just wanted to make sure that we're, you know, if, maybe staff already hears it as well, but I just want to kind of say it clear that that's what we would like staff to do. I'm on board with it.
Councilmember Emilio?
Yeah, I actually pulled the last one, and I thank Mr. Councilman Coletti for doing this. I, the reason I pulled it was what I mentioned about, I was concerned about the staff time, but that's been resolved. But I also had some questions on the agenda, on the check registry. And those were, I talked to the staff a couple of days ago. It's been resolved. So I suggest we keep it on the consent calendar.
Well, seeing no further, Mr. Harvey.
Yeah, I just, I'm going to suggest that if, if it is going to be a reoccurring item, that it come from the Administrative Services Director. Because if there is a question, it, she's going to be the best person to respond to that.
I think that's a great idea.
Councilmember Smith?
I, I agree with the mayor. I don't, this, I don't think this needs to be on our agenda. It needs to be made available to the public for access. So I think, starting to kind of get a little off track here, but that's what, that's what I think. So I'm with the mayor.
And I, just to clarify, I think, you know, providing this information to the public, and I discussed this, I think the city clerk and I recently had a, had the discussion where a reports, council agenda reports that have links to material that's on the city website is a good way to reduce the volume of packets, and just to point out to the public that this information is available online. So I'm, I'm thinking you might further have discussion with council members, particularly Councilmember Coletti, as, as this was his initiative on ironing out any, any details. That's just my thought.
That sounds good, Mayor. I, I think the direction is that council would like to see these reports made available to the public, and we'll work out the details. That's my understanding.
Mr. Harvey? Are we good? A little bit, maybe a little bit of ambiguity there, but our uncertainty as to exactly what's going to happen, but-
I mean, I, I think it's fine. It's a received a report. Instead, we're, you know, merging with a, a new item, but we, we can, I think we can work to develop something to bring forward. I wouldn't recommend any more frequently than monthly.
Any other council discussion? I think those are good words to end with. All right. Seeing no further discussion, we'll move on to item 12B, street rehabilitation, Lower Lighthouse Avenue and Funston Avenue. Mr. Go, welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of the city council, let me share my screen with you briefly.
What's up, Kitty?
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, very briefly, tonight I will present to you our paving project for this upcoming year of Lower Lighthouse and Funston Avenue. I will be kind of piggybacking on Ms. Hallibee's presentation earlier, but this is a ward of contract for the project. So this year, fiscal year 2021, we will be paving Lighthouse Avenue, primarily paving it between Erdley and 13th Street. This road was selected, the lower portion of Lighthouse Avenue was selected because the current pavement condition index is a 32 to a 45. The road is currently failing. So as part of the project, we will be doing complete reconstruction on over 70,000 square feet of the roadway. We will do 2,000 square feet of two-inch overlay. With the project, we'll be reconstructing 14 curb ramps. We'll be doing storm drain improvements. We'll be reconstructing three sewer manholes. We'll be making four sewer spot repairs and replacing 310 linear feet of sewer line. Then we'll be moving up to Funston Avenue, where we'll be also paving between Montecito and Presidio. The current PCI of this roadway is 49, so also very close to beginning to fail. Now, this road isn't a collector or arterial, but we all know that it's a main avenue into Del Monte Park. We've done slurry seals and pavings on almost every other road in Del Monte Park. This will pretty much complete that area of the city. So the scope of Funston Avenue will be to perform an overlay on 41,000 square feet. That would be a two-and-a-half inch overlay. We'll be reconstructing 4,600 square feet of the road. We'll be also constructing two new catch basins for stormwater control and be making six sewer spot repairs. So as Ms. Hallibee mentioned earlier in her presentation, if we're going to rehabilitate a roadway, we're going to take care of the infrastructure that's under it prior to us paving. So on March 1st, the city distributed a call for bids for the project, and we received four bids from Monterey Peninsula Engineering, Don Chapin Company, Granite Construction, and Tyker. As you can see, Monterey Peninsula Engineering came in with the lowest bid. They were all very competitive bids, by the way. So the funding for the project, again, as you saw earlier this evening, is this SB1, road maintenance and rehabilitation funding, Measure X, which is our local county measure, the general fund, which helps us meet the maintenance of effort for a total paving project of $868,000, which was budgeted through the CIP. And then tonight, with the ordinance and the budget amendment, you allocated an additional $485,000 to make the necessary sewer repairs on those roadways prior to us going in and paving. So the project benefits is these road rehabilitations are two major roads in PG. By doing the storm drain and sewer work, we're protecting the environment. We're also increasing access by doing the curb ramps on Lighthouse and the general fund contributions ensure we meet the maintenance of efforts. So tonight, the recommendation is to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Monterey Peninsula Engineering for the fiscal year 2021 road rehabilitation project on Lighthouse and Funston Avenue in an amount not to exceed $1,177,556 plus a 15% contingency. That concludes my report, and I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments or questions on this agenda item?
I do not see any hands raised. Mayor Peake?
Do we have council comments or discussion? Councilmember Pudory?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a quick question to Mr. Go. Thank you for bringing this and sharing the details. When the repaving occurs, do you also take into consideration bicycle lanes or provision for bike lanes at the same time?
On many of our roadways, we do, and we have conducted some improved bike lanes on some of our slurry seal projects. Lighthouse Avenue and Funston Avenue just don't really have the room to add those in right now. We are working through the Traffic Commission currently to do, or to analyze the city entirely as a whole with bike lanes. So the paving project doesn't necessarily mean we have to add them now. If it's recommended in the future that we come back and add bike lanes to some of these roadways, that wouldn't be a problem to do it. It really has no bearing on the paving or the sewer work that needs to be performed at the present moment.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I'm glad to see Del Monte Park getting some much-needed TLC, so I, I'm supporting this, but I do have a question about the maintenance of effort amount. It gets referred to quite frequently, and what is the actual annual amount, or is, are there different categories? Are there different maintenance of effort amounts for different types of work? So I guess that's my question. Or is it just, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Excuse me, yes. Councilmember Coletti through the mayor, the maintenance of effort for the city of Pacific Grove is currently $500,000 per fiscal year. This project has $300,000 allocated out of its general fund. Now, the maintenance of effort needs to be derived strictly from street maintenance. So our general fund streets budget that's allocated out through the Public Works funding sources meets those efforts along with any CIP monies that we allocate. So for this project, we have $300,000 that we're allocating. And then, as you see currently throughout town the last two weeks, and today, we just started our slurry seal project, which has, also has money allocated out that goes towards our maintenance of effort, both for Measure X and SB1.
Thank you. Yeah, I certainly support doing, paying whatever it requires to keep. the Measure X and SB1 funding coming in. And you're saying it's a, it's a minimum of $500,000 a year. And I, and I did see the, uh, I did see the slurry on cynics that looked very good. So, um, as I mentioned, I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Council member Emilio.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I, uh, I'm also supporting it, Mr. Go. The, it's nice to see, uh, the Lower Lighthouse and, uh, Funston Avenue, uh, Del Monte Park area in the area where I live at, but I don't live on Funston, but, uh, travel a lot. But it's great to see that. That's one of the complaints I did receive when I used to knock on doors a little over two years ago. But, uh, mayor, I'd be willing to make a motion on this.
Please.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Monterey Peninsula Engineering for the fiscal year 2021 street rehab project on Lower Lighthouse Avenue and Funston Avenue in the amount not to exceed $1,177,556 bucks plus a 15% contingency.
I'll second.
May we have a vote, please?
Council member Emilio.
Aye.
Council member Coletti.
Aye.
Council member McAdams.
Aye.
Council member Pedori.
Aye.
Council member Smith. Council member Tomlinson.
Aye.
Mayor Peake.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We'll now go to item 12C, Community Center Gutter, Fasha, and Downsout Replacement Project. Ms. Hallaby, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening again, honorable mayor and members of the city council. Bear with me as I share my screen. All right. The item before you tonight is the award of contract for the community center gutter fascia and downspout replacement project. The recommendation associated with this item is to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Shellco General Contractors in an amount not to exceed $63,500 plus a 15% contingency. As you're all aware, the community center is a beloved asset. It houses a banquet hall, meeting room, preschool facilities, office space, and more. And the existing gutter fascia and downspouts have significantly deteriorated as illustrated in these photos, and they are in dire need of replacement. This project was approved through the current year CIP with a $50,000 budget from the Strong Disbursement Fund. And again, the intention is really to address the deteriorated roofing infrastructure, but also and equally important to prevent a much more extensive and much more expensive, uh, roof repair project in the future. A call for bids was issued in January and closed in February, and five bids were received for the project. Shellco General Contractors was qualified as the lowest responsible bidder. The scope of work for the project includes removal and disposal of the deteriorated sheet metal gutters, trimming of the existing rafter tails, installation of new wood fascia, and installation of new aluminum gutter and downspouts. Here's just a quick overview of the project funding. The original approved project budget was $50,000. Through the ordinance amending the budget, an additional $23,025 has been allocated. So a total of $73,025 is a full project amount, and that includes that 15% contingency. So with that, I will conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
Yes, we do, mayor. Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hello, mayor and council members. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, I'm not sure I have much insight into this, but it looks like what we would call a, um, built-in gutter. It's between the fascia and the structure. It's complicated, uh, and usually suffers from this kind of, um, deterioration. I'm wondering why one wouldn't change this out and turn it into an exterior gutter system that would be mounted on the outside of the fascia. Um, I want to make, it sounds like it's an existing sheet metal gutter, and you're proposing a, an aluminum gutter or a plastic gutter. Um, and I'm not sure if they're plastic or aluminum downspouts, but, um, I'm just wondering who designed the solution? Did the contractor or subcontractor design the solution? And is this the best solution to be getting bids on? Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Council discussion, comments? Motion? Council member McAdams.
Thank you, uh, mayor. I actually, in the spirit of supporting local business, Scudder Roofing, which is based out of Marina, California's bid came in, uh, $115 uh, over the lowest bidder. So I'm wondering, uh, would it be possible to, and, and perhaps Ms. Hallaby can answer this question, would that hinder the project? Or would that be, uh, an issue if we went with the, um, second lowest bidder?
So, uh, council member McAdams through the mayor peak. Um, we typically follow the standard procedures that are notated in the municipal code, which require us to go with the lowest responsible bidder, which was Shellco General Contractors. So that's our staff recommendation.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Council member Coletti.
Thank you, mayor. I, I just have a real quick question. I, and it's kind of, well, looking at your PowerPoint, there was a picture of, uh, you know, the gutter with a bunch of leaves and needles in it. Is this project going to install some kind of screening to keep debris from getting into the gutter?
No, there will not be any screening as a part of this project.
Council member Smith.
Move approval, your honor.
Second.
May we have a vote, please?
Yes, your honor, that happened so quickly. So I have, um, council member Smith moving approval and council member McAdams second. Correct. Thank you. Council member Smith. Council member McAdams.
Aye.
Council member Tomlinson.
Aye.
Council member Pedori.
Aye.
Council member Coletti.
Aye.
Council member Emilio.
Aye.
Mayor Peake.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the former item 8B, which is promissory payment related to entitlement water and large scale instruction. Mr. Harvey.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I, I do not have a report for this item. This follows, um, council discussion at the last meeting. We're in, there was a request for additional information about promissory notes related to entitlement water. The city has issued one. It is to a mixed use project on Lighthouse. Uh, we've attached, um, a sample promissory note to the agenda report. I'm happy to answer any questions about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
We do, your honor. Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Mayor and council members, this is a very disturbing trend. The notion that the city of Pacific Grove is going to be subsidizing wealthy developers of very large scale proj- prod- projects. It seems unfair. Doesn't seem like equal treatment to the people of Pacific Grove. How about all those folks on, that want to add a bathroom or a, or other fixtures? Are you going to subsidize them too, in the same way you're subsidizing a wealthy developer? Are you going to continue to subsidize other wealthy developers? This just seems wrong. Ethically, morally wrong, and fiduciary wrong for the city to do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Inga Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, mayor and council. Everything is wrong about this. The fact that it was on the consent agenda? That's insane. The fact that it, the city manager authorized himself to take this action without any other consultation with the public or the council is just unconscionable. And since when did the city of Pacific Grove become a bank for developers? That's insane. And there's nothing in the world equal about this. This is preferential treatment for a developer. That's crazy. Just, this is not the way for Pacific Grove to head. It should never happen again. If the council really wants to authorize promissory notes, then bring them up to the council, but don't just make a 600 and some odd thousand dollar loan on your own. It's, it's ridiculous. So please, don't do this again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Craig Riddell, you have the floor.
Welcome. Hello, uh, my name's Craig Riddell. Um, I'm a longtime resident of Monterey Peninsula. I served on, uh, the planning commission for Pacific Grove for a number of years and I was chair. Um, you know, I, I just see this in a totally different light, you know, um, with the, the Lighthouse project that the promissory note's been issued for. Uh, it's a way for a project like that that's going to have a lot of community benefit to move forward. It's very, very difficult in these economic times to finance projects like this. And I, I don't understand this, this concept of gift of services. Um, that is not what's happening. They're deferring payment in my mind till such time as they need the water, you know? It's not like they're, they're not going to pay that money. Of course, they're going to pay that money. Uh, they're just trying not to pay it prior months and, and months prior to when they might use that water. Um, the city is guaranteed in so many different ways, um, that this payment will happen. Um, there's a deed restriction, of course. Um, there's, um, the fact that they won't be able to open up unless they get occupancy. Uh, and I, I think what the, the, what some of the members might be missing is that the millions of dollars it takes to make projects like these move forward um, and public good that that's going to provide. Let, let's look at that project on, on, uh, on Lighthouse. That, that project is going to provide retail dollars, retail sales tax. It's going to provide some housing. It's going to increase property value. Um, the other project I think that you're considering this for is the hotel. Quite often, um, you see cities go, um, provide all sorts of resources, uh, for hotels to try to bring a, a, a good quality hotel into a, a city. Um, to my knowledge, we haven't done that at all with hotel, uh, with the hotel project that's proposed. Um, they've simply asked for a potential deferral, uh, on a payment of one particular fee uh, till, till such time as they might use that fee. So I would support this. I, I don't think of this as a gift of resources. Um, I think of this as a, a way to move projects forward that benefit the community. Um, I, I can't imagine, I'm not sure exactly how many dollars the city is going to receive from the TOT taxes from the hotel or retail taxes from, uh, um, the project on Lighthouse. Um, but I'm sure the city's going to, uh, receive quite a bit of benefit and it'll be good for everybody. So I, I would ask the council, um, to move forward on, on these kind of promissory notes when, when it's reasonable, at the discretion of, um, of the city manager, when he feels it makes sense. And when the city can, as is being in this case, well protected, be certain that the fees are not going to be a gift, that they are going to get received. Uh, thank you for your time and, uh, all your efforts on tonight. I know it's taken a long time to get through this whole process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wendy Giles, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, under no circumstance should anyone at city staff be issuing promissory notes for any amount of money. That's not their position. This isn't a bank, and that money belongs in the resource pool to run the city. Developers know how to get money, and jumping over protocols that are in place that require the city council to approve expenditures is in place for exactly this. Preferential treatment to a developer for water for 600 and something thousand dollars? Ridiculous. Don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Bob, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, my name's Robert Leach. I'm the president of, uh, West River Hotels. Um, I'm the, uh, developer that's been asked to come in and build the hotel, uh, which we've been working on for the past several months and plan to move forward with this, this fall. Um, I have to say that, uh, I'm somewhat taken back with the idea that everybody's, everybody builds hotels as multimillionaires. Um, I actually spent the first 20 years of my adult life, uh, working for city government. And then, uh, I guess I moved on to the dark side and became a developer and then I got into the hotel business. But, uh, our company builds, uh, you know, beautiful, uh, full-service hotels, which are difficult to get off the ground. Uh, most cities have economic development programs that are geared towards assisting full-service hotels in their development and construction. In this case, the, the local owners, uh, didn't ask for any money, uh, from the city to build anything. Uh, they're doing this all on their own. The cost of the project is about $50 million. Uh, we're hiring, uh, local subcontractors and subs. Uh, it'll create about 80 or 90 permanent jobs. And in the case of a, of a hotel, what's unique about it is that it pays the city back 12% of gross at this time, and, and those, those percentages sometimes go up, but it pays back, in this case, you'll see a return close to $7.2 million in the first five years. It'll average probably over a million dollars a year, every year, in transient occupancy tax. So rather than consider it a subsidy for rich people, uh, maybe you could look at it as an economic stimulus package that helps the community. Cause I've listened for several hours tonight about all the, the things that you people are challenged with to try to, uh, fund. And, and I, I know those, those costs because I worked for city government for 20 years. And I can tell you that there's no better economic generator that you have, uh, than this particular hotel project. And again, categorizing it as a subsidy is incorrect because all it is, is a deferral of a payment until the water is going to actually be used. Uh, we start off by paying a building permit and we pay fees all along the way. But, uh, it, it's, new hotels, they have such a great benefit to communities, including the fact that they're energy efficient, they use less water, uh, they have abilities to recycle water. Uh, it, it's, in this project, I looked at the, I read the newspaper articles and all the time that the, the city took it's, it deciding whether to do this project or not. I have to say the design they have ultimately came up with much better than the original designs. It's a beautiful project, and I would encourage you to support this. Uh, again, I'm not a multi-zillionaire guy. I put together, I'm the quarterback of the team. I have to put together the debt and equity stacks to build this project. Uh, it's very difficult this time coming out of COVID, and, and we appreciate your support, uh, to try to help this, uh, get off the ground this fall. Uh, thank you very much for your time. Take care.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Council discussion, comments? Council member Tomlinson.
Thank you, mayor. Um, and, and this was pulled from the consent agenda and is a receive the report, right? So we're not voting on anything. And, um, so I guess just from a discussion standpoint, my take on the fact that there was, uh, am I right about that, mayor?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. Um, the, the promissory note that was The, the promissory note that was already issued for one project is, is, we're not in discussion on whether that's going to stand or not. And then the attachment here is, you know, and basically for us to view as a, a draft for how a promissory note could look going forward. Where I feel about the promissory note for the water, for the developers is I think it's an absolute tool. And I, I know we received the report on doing it in December. And I had no issue with it then and I still have no issue with it. We, we held a tax lien on the property and we hold the ability to sign off on occupancy before that amount is paid to the city. So, you know, we pride our, or we have a goal of helping local businesses thrive and encouraging economic development in our community. And this is a way to be able to do that. And, you know, I, I've, I support this promissory note for these types of large-scale construction projects. We can't put a lien on somebody's house who wants to build an extra bathroom and, and, you know, take away occupancy and, and these types of things. So it makes sense to me to do the promissory note for these large-scale projects as they put together, the, put together the projects for water.
Council member Colletti.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, there's a lot to unravel with this one. First off, th- there's no tax lien. And I heard someone also mention a deed restriction. There's no deed restriction. There is a trust deed, however, which is a promise. We basically have secured this promise to pay this through this promissory, promissory note through a trust deed, which was filed back in September of last year. You know, this absolutely is a subsidy. And we can argue about or discuss whether it's, it's a good one or a bad one. But it, it sure is, it sure it's a subsidy. What we're doing is we're transferring a right to water onto that property. It's, it's a, it's a land use entitlement that we are giving to them without any money down. Anyone who is going to secure it through this promissory note scheme. So there's a lot of things that come with having that water as a right, as owning that water right. One of them is you can go out and secure financing. That's huge. So we gave them access to our water so they can go get financed. They can't get a building permit without having a water permit. We transferred water to them with no money down. That allows them now to go out, secure financing and get a building permit. So there are a couple of things here. There should be at least some money paid upfront to the city for this, this gift of a water right to the property. And what that is, you know, there is, there is an option here in the, in the agenda that says direct staff to revise the draft promissory note. I would, I'd like us to consider, you know, directing staff to consider what the appropriate policy for, for implementing this, this scheme is. The real thing that kind of, the, the thing that bothers me the most though perhaps is that this was not brought before council. So the promissory note for 520 lighthouses for about $628,000. I have no idea where we sit, whether we're the first truster, the second, the third. You know, our line, you know, there may be people lined up way ahead of us. So there, there are issues. There's no guarantee they'll get paid. So that's true with anything really, but to say that it's, it's an ironclad agreement that we will get paid no matter what, well, we might not. And then there's a proposed second promissory note for 1.2 million for the Pacific Grove Hotel, the old Hotel Durrell. You know, that is just, you know, I, in my mind, that's just out of line. There's this question of equity. Everyone who's accessed our water entitlement to date has paid full freight. 520 lighthouse, you know, yeah, sure, it'll, it'll drive some, some, you know, there'll be economic benefit. But the reality is also that those are 10 luxury condos. No affordable housing's coming out of that project. So to make all these, you know, these, uh, these cost-benefit analysis, you know, I just come down to, we have this entitlement, we're giving them their, an, an access to it, we're transferring it to them and we're not getting anything upfront. And again, this has to come before council. I, we, the city manager on his own cannot decide that a $628,000 promissory note will be issued and a trust, associated trust deed without approval from council. You know, it's just, it's in our charter that, you know, the mayor has to sign deeds and legal instruments. That didn't happen. So I'm, I'm not saying no to, you know, the idea of helping finance a project to some extent, but there better be some money down. And I, I think really where we got to go with this is we've got to develop a policy for what makes sense. And it's, and it, which is equitable to everybody. Because right now we don't have a policy. It did come before council. And we need to, we need to really address those two issues first. Thank you.
Council member Peduri.
Thank you, Mayor. My view is that we, we need to make Pacific Grove really business-friendly. And that starts right here, which is encouraging developers and everybody else to participate in anything that involves the city. And so promissory note is just one for said, but I, I think anything like this, we need to keep an open mind, make sure that like we are encouraging development. What it also results in is, as the, I mean, this development, during the course of development, it has brought jobs to the city, especially during the pandemic time. It has brought jobs to the city. Anytime we deal with instances where we're delaying things, they just cost the city in, in the, in the aftermath. So I, in my view, this should exist to begin with and we should consider more options on how we can actually bring in more developers. So that's, that's my take for discussions or business.
Council member McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, as far as the economic development and the jobs and encouraging developers, I wholeheartedly support, support those things, but, but we're the policymakers of the city. And, you know, it's important that if we do want to go this route, and I think having the water entitlements are good leverage, you know? I mean, I mean, I mean, it really is, but the leverage would be fine. You can have the water entitlement, but we're not going to give you the 30% discount. You know, I mean, the promissory note, the one that the city manager authorized logs in the 30% discount. And Council member Coletti is, is correct. I mean, without any money down. For me, you know, the city is not in a position to be doing that. And really the purpose of the water entitlements is to generate revenue. If we're going to give water entitlements for affordable housing or, you know, equitably to residents who have been on the waiting list forever for a bathroom or, you know, sure, then let's develop a program. But in no way can our city manager be going around and authorizing this. It is, it is above and beyond his powers as a city manager. And it's really taking away a lot of process, a lot of discussion and community input. So, you know, I, for me, it's disappointing to see that this promissory note was executed without council discussion or council approval. And if we want to go this direction, then, you know, I would be open to amending our municipal code. We have 11 dot 68 dot 040, which is entitlement water. And if you read it, there is no verbiage that speaks to promissory notes. There is a verbiage that speaks to the sales. So I'm happy, you know, that we explore this, do it the right way, have the city attorney come back with an amendment to the code. And we can decide at that point if the City of Pacific Grove wants to offer water entitlements via promissory notes. Thank you.
Council member Emilio.
I agree with, let me see here for a second. I agree with Councilman Peduri's view. We want to be business-friendly. And I also kind of look at the larger picture on projects. And before I start my statement, I have to ask the city manager, how many projects, these, these large projects do we have in the pipeline? Do we have like 10 or 12 or 14?
Councilman Emilio through the mayor, the only project that would be like this is the one that the public speaker spoke of. It's the PG Hotel. That's the only project of this nature that I'm aware of. The A T C Hotel project does not require water.
Okay, thank, thank you for that, Mr. Harvey. I also want to look at what Councilman Peduri mentioned, but I also want to look at the long run. Is that, you know, a lot of people have been unemployed during this pandemic. And with these projects, with this, the hotel behind the, the Pacific Hotel, Supergrove Hotel and the one on Lighthouse, once they're open, we're going to have, looking at the big picture, we're going to have a lot of employment with local people. One of the speakers talked about getting people locally to be hired both for subs and people that are going to be hired by these once they're completed. And so I know this is a receive the report, but I'm in support of this.
Council member Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, you know, I, I think a lot of good points have been made. I, I mean, I'm, I'm of the opinion that things like this will help economic development in the city in general, as far as these, the use of promissory notes to transfer water entitlements. I'm also of the opinion that there aren't going to be that many instances of this in our, in our small city here. But I, I have one question and then I'll continue to make some comments. I, I'd like to direct a question to Mr. Harvey, if I may, Your Honor.
Please.
Mr. Harvey, you've stated in, in this, on page 61 of your agenda report that this practice is not unique to Pacific Grove. It's offered in other municipalities in California. So my question is, in those municipalities, are you aware generally of the process by which these notes are issued? As far as are they requiring council approval? Are they done under the power of the city manager in his office, et cetera?
Councilmember Smith through the mayor, it's, it's my understanding that, yeah, that they're performed through the city manager's office or the chief executive's office, not by council action.
And, and one follow-up. This, I mean, it's a little bit of a gray area, but it's not, I mean, as far as your spending authority or, or your authority, th- this is essentially it's a water entitlement and then a later payout. Is that kind of how you see this or?
Right. I mean, through, through, through the mayor, I, I'm not spending money. The city council sets the, the price for the entitlement water. The city is, is guaranteed that price through the promissory note and the lien. The city also reserves the right not to provide final occupancy of the building. So we, we have ultimate leverage here. It's, it's, it's unique to a large-scale construction project. These are, these are projects potentially that produce revenue streams for the cities. If, if there's a, you know, question as to why we would consider this. You know, the, the mixed-use project on, on Lighthouse, in addition to property tax, also has the ability to generate sales tax. You know, the PG Hotel would actually have the ability to generate all three streams of revenue, which makes it very different than a residential bathroom, which is, I think, as your colleague pointed out earlier, you, you also are hindered by, you know, the occupancy issue. You, you can't prohibit occupancy and you're not going to put a lien on a, on a home for a, you know, a $5,000 water entitlement for a bathroom.
Okay, thank you. So thank you, Mr. Harvey. So I, you know, I, I think going back to my comments, I think that, uh, like I said, this is not, it's, it's going to happen again, but probably infrequently. I, I, I understand some of the commentary about council approval. I do understand where, where folks are coming from on that. Generally, I am supportive of the use of these, these mechanisms, for lack of a better word here at 938, to, to promote economic development and these larger construction projects in order to further our city's economic development. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey, for your report. I, I, in general, support this action, the promissory notes. But it's the, the execution that I'm concerned about. Our entitlement water ordinance, 11 68 040, just says the sale of entitlement water. And prior to these, the promissory note, it's my understanding that everyone that wanted entitlement water, wanted to purchase it, had to pay in cash before they would even receive a building permit. And I, I can understand the logic for asking for that. So our ordinance is pretty, pretty simple and with the promissory note, it becomes more complex because now we have a deed to a property. And quite frankly, I don't want the city to have deeds, to be on deeds of, of private property. I just want the city to be paid for entitlement water. But in principle, I, like I said, I'm, I'm fine with this. I think we ought to allow this for everybody. I, I don't think we should decide who gets it or who doesn't. And, and I, I have a different opinion. We have liens on properties. And I, there's a cost associated with setting up this promissory note. And I'm assuming we're going to be charging, if we haven't already, we're going to be charging people the staff expense and, and the recording fees for these promissory notes. And that's, that's a hurdle that perhaps some residents won't, won't want to take on. But I think we ought to be making it available to anyone. And clearly, well, we just passed an ordinance not too long ago about special assessments. That's a pretty ironclad, that's, that's even better probably than the, than the part of the deed is the special assessment. So I think we can do this for everybody. I'm concerned about the, I would like to see a deposit upfront, quite frankly. I'll be transparent with that. I think there should be some, some money that changes hands at the beginning, before the building starts, before they get the building permit. And I, I'd like to know more about the, the security. The certificate of occupancy, is, is that when the, when? The certificate of occupancy, is, is that when the, when the building is sold? Or, I, I'd like to know more about how this works for, for future projects. I am concerned about the payment date, that if some of these could drag on. There's, I noticed there's no payment date or expiration date. So anyhow, a few details perhaps, but I would like to see this come back as an amendment to our entitlement to water ordinance in the municipal code. Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I support your comments in the direction, which is to get this, you know, get this into our policy, get this codified into our municipal code so that council is aware of what's going, going on. I just, I don't think the city manager has the authority to issue $628,000 of debt, which effectively this is, it's an IOU. So, and, and I, and I've listened to my colleagues and I understand, you know, that this can definitely be used to incentivize development. And I'm not, I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I'm just kind of focusing more on the process of what we want to do to do, to, to implement that, you know, those incentives. So I think, as the mayor pointed out, the right place to put it is in the water entitlement section of our municipal code. And let's have a discussion on, on how we're going to do it. And I think there's plenty enough, you know, plenty enough ideas here to, to develop something. So I'm not necessarily saying, don't do it, but I agree with the mayor. We need to get something paid upfront, whatever that is, whatever council decides. And then it has to come back to council to authorize it. That's, that's our duty. That's, you know, that's, that's the council's responsibility. And, and so those are my closing thoughts. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just be super brief, but I do think, you know, having this program or having this in our code is very important. So everybody understands what's entailed and lays out the process. It absolutely should be full cost recovery, which is in line with all of our other programs, and recording fees, et cetera. So I also support, you know, having a down payment, having an end date. And, you know, something that I am curious about is, what are the protections? You know, I mean, if, if a, a project takes three to five years and a water source becomes available, then they wouldn't technically have to pay for the water entitlements. And we're holding, you know, promissory note, what does that look like? You know, these projects do take a long time. So I just want to make sure that the city is absolutely protected, just like with any other lien holder or bank. And, and that, you know, regardless, we would have recourse. Because ultimately, you know, this is money that benefits our services and benefits our residents. So, thank you.
This was a supposed to receive the report. So, Mr. Harvey, unless you had any further comments or questions?
Well, I mean, I, I'm hearing very different views on this. I'm not hearing consensus on, I, I, I hear one perspective or another perspective on this. I, you know, I don't, this is a receive the report. And I'm not, I'm not really sure, you know, at this point, what, what it is that I'm being asked to do. And I don't know that, I, I, I have some council members feeling one way and some council members feeling another way.
I think that's accurate assessment of the comments that I've heard. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to provide some clarity in that, you know, I stated how much I do, I support the promissory note. I heard that from a couple of other council members as well. So maybe the discussion item of wanting to know what staff should do next is being able to incorporate a way that we handle promissory notes in the future into the code. And I support that as well. I think coming back with, with the language in the, in the entitlement water section is, is appropriate. And, and then we'll know how to handle these promissory note requests as we go forward.
And, and I'll add that I, I heard support for promissory notes from every council member. Or they were open to promissory notes, every, everyone, so. So I think that, that's a good summary, Councilmember Tomlinson's comments about coming back to council with a modification of the 1168040 ordinance on entitlement waters, where we include the action of promissory or the issuing of promissory notes. Unless I hear an objection from other council members that we shouldn't do that. And I'm not seeing any. Mr. Harvey?
That's fine, we'll, we'll bring back a code revision for the council to consider.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now move on to the former item 9B, the ColdPro Media. Mr. Harvey, I think that is yours as well. Yes?
Yes, and thank you, Mayor. And I, and this is a consent calendar item. I don't have a presentation on this. When the city entered into the agreement with ColdPro Media six months ago, we agreed to come back to the council to advise how that was, relationship was going. By mutual agreement with ColdPro Media, the contract has not been beneficial really overwhelmingly to either side. And so we're recommending to end the contract at this point.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do, Mayor. I have the telephone number, last three numbers are 403. You have the floor.
Welcome.
Telephone number 403, the last three digits, you have the floor. Okay. I will move forward. Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. It appears that you'll be ending the contract with ColdPro Media without public discussion of how staff is going to be learning open, honest, and transparent communication skills. That learning may not be realistic expectation, in any case, when the administration often does not model those skills. Eight members of the community spoke at the October 21st council meeting and let you know it would be a waste of our taxpayer dollars to hire a transparency consultant when there was no assurance that the city administration was committed to learning the necessary skills, which Laura Cole so clearly pointed out come down to honesty. Openness and engagement with the public and accountability are crucial also. And motivation is a basic first step in education. How does the public know that the city manager has been cooperating with ColdPro? After all, when ColdPro's community survey gave him a very negative evaluation, he denied the validity of the survey without considering how he could improve. And that survey is the only way the public has been able to communicate our concerns to the consultants, as far as I know. Otherwise, the consultant had expected to depend on the city manager and another point person, she said, as well as the police chief, to let them know if there are transparency issues. I don't have confidence that the city manager or an employee of his at City Hall has informed the consultant of transparency issues. I do have confidence in the police chief. So now the city will have spent over $20,000, as indicated in the agenda report, on a consultant that hasn't been allowed to prepare the requested six month report, at least not one that the public can see. And apparently ColdPro will be dismissed in 30 days, perhaps without any expectations of their working for that last month. It is curious that the contract was not signed until February 1st, when the contract was supposed to start last November 1st. I hope that there could be a public Zoom workshop with the transparency advisor using that last month's payment to see what suggestions she may have for us going forward, what best practices we could hope to see, or at the very least, produce the six month report, at which I hope council could learn from. And I hope council and the city, city manager have some good ideas how to teach city administration and staff those best practices. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy Giles, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening. My question is simple. I'd like to see, I'd like to know where the public can see all of Laura Cole's work that she's done in the last six months, whenever the contract was signed, and what transparence we actually have from her time with us that we paid $20,000 for. Interesting, we can't have crossing guards, but there are some reports out there. I'll send an email asking where I can see all that documentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Bringing back the council. I, I just want to note, in addition to Mr. Harvey's reasons for his decision to terminate our relationship with ColdPro Media, that council has received a number of comments over the last few months about ColdPro Media, and they were all negative. So it didn't seem like the public wants to keep ColdPro Media around any further. So this is a, receive the report and provide direction. So my direction is in, in support of the city manager's actions. Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also, you know, support this action as well. I am wondering though, Mr. City Manager, is there a summary that we could receive from ColdPro Media? Or just maybe some bullet points of, of work that she has done? Because that is, a lot of the communications we received from the community was, you know, what are they doing, how are they helping the city? So perhaps that would be helpful to sort of show something tangible. I know she was working behind the scenes, but this way, you know, and I would even appreciate to understand what ColdPro Media was doing as well. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Okay, I'm seeing no further hands.
Oh, Your Honor, I'm sorry, I have one comment, if I may.
Councilmember Smith, yes, please.
I, I am completely supportive of terminating this relationship. I don't, I don't, I didn't see anything that, that ColdPro Media did for the city, actually, unfortunately. And I realize that some money has exchanged hands. But yeah, no, 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 I, I'm in full agreement with that. And I hope that we can find other ways to be more transparent. And, and some of the ideas, you know, we've talked about a bunch of ideas, but, you know, increase technology and get our website up and running, that needs to happen right away. And give public electronic access to records, that's huge. And I would include in that the check register. I was kind of making a survey of the agenda tonight, which was extremely lengthy. But no, I, I fully support the action and thank you for the time.
Councilmember Emilio.
Yeah, I just wanted to do, we had this budget discussion already. And I just, if we have any money left or right, already made a comment that that goes to the Economic Development Commission, whether it's 20 or 25,000. During our budget discussion, I, I did make that suggestion. So, that's all.
All right, it's now just about 10 o'clock. And I see we've got four remaining items.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't believe you've concluded this. You need to be providing a direction to staff. And I think that that should be by council vote.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to
Okay. Please.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to direct staff to send a writ notice of termination to ColdPro Media.
Second.
Vote, please.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio.
Aye.
Mayor Peak.
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti.
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Peduri.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
It is now 10 o'clock. We have four remaining items on the agenda. I want to note that item 13C, Resolution to Authorize an Application to CalFire's Fire Prevention Planning Grant Program, is time sensitive. And it is to apply for a state grant for funding. So please take that into consideration when you make a motion to continue the other items or not. Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to move that we hear item 13C and then table the 13A and 13B to the next regular city council meeting. Am I missing one more item?
Yes, it's the former item 6C in regards the resolution to support a coast use of the NOAA building. And that is now 13D.
So I would, is that a friendly amendment?
I know, that, I was just telling you, that was the other remaining item.
And other item. So we would hear, we would hear 13C and then move the remaining three items to our next regular scheduled meeting.
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for mentioning that this has got a short fuse on it. Does the NOAA resolution have a short fuse on it, as far as you know, as well?
Not that I'm aware of. It's been in the works, well, not that I'm aware of. The building has been for sale for many years.
Yeah, I understand, but there's been a lot of correspondence on it. And I think, yeah, so there was some, an ask for more clarity on it. So that
And I think, yeah, so there was some, an ask for more clarity on it. So that's why I pulled it, but if there's not a rush to get it adopted, then I would support moving it to the next agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we do have Ms. Foreman raising her hand and
Yeah, this is in, I don't think, I can check with our city attorney, but I don't think this is a public discussion item.
I'll second the motion that's on the table.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, actually, I think Councilmember Thompson, you're the third.
Oh, I'm sorry. All third in motion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Laredo, is this up for public discussion?
No, it is not. It is not. It is not a debatable matter. And it's not, public discussion is not warranted.
Well, I, I will note that we have people in our virtual audience that have been waiting throughout our meeting to hear this one item and it's, it's unfortunate, but our meetings are long. Councilmember Pedori?
You're muted.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor. I was going to say if the public attendant, attendees, one of the public attendees is contemplating the priority of the item that we're pushing for next week, perhaps we should listen to her. I don't know what the process is, but maybe that's why she raised her hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, to your point, I've, I've asked the, the city clerk to put any continued items higher up in, in our agenda before the new items get added. If that is all practical. Okay, so we need a vote. We've got a motion on the floor to hear 13C and continue the remaining three items to our next regularly scheduled meeting. So maybe we have a vote, please.
Mayor Peak?
Hi.
Councilmember Emilio?
Hi.
Councilmember Coletti?
Hi.
Councilmember McAdams?
Hi.
Councilmember Pedori?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Hi.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Hi.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. And Ms. Hunter, welcome.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council and public. As most people are aware, California and the Central Coast are annually threatened by hazardous conditions created to a large degree by our rapidly changing climate. These threats are primarily relating to wildfire, but also relate to sea level rise, potential flooding caused by extreme high tides and other related weather events, earthquakes and tsunami run up. CAL FIRE offers a variety of grants annually for local agencies to undertake fuel reduction projects and planning efforts. This grant program that we're discussing tonight falls within CAL FIRE's Fire Prevention Planning Program and specifically mentions safety element updates as one of the authorized uses of grant funds. Although CAL FIRE's main concern is wildfire, the agency recognizes that other areas of concern and potential impact are included in the safety element of a local jurisdiction's general plan. Our 1994 general plan safety element is deficient in that it no longer complies with a variety of state laws and mandates and does not adequately address the key elements of risk in our city, which are wildfire and sea level rise. As mentioned in the agenda report, the city meets all of the required criteria to be competitive in this program. An additional competitive edge would be to commit matching funds, although that is not a requirement of the application. Staff recommends that the city council consider committing to a $50,000 match resulting in a grant request of $40,000, but council may also consider going for a higher request with the understanding that, that makes the application a little less competitive. It's also important to note that if awarded and accepted, staff time and managing not only the consultant who would be under contract with the city to prepare the safety element and undertake related tasks, public meetings, outreach, sequodocument, et cetera, but also managing the grant obligations would require significant staff time. In the agenda report, we mentioned 10 to 15 hours a week, but have adjusted that down roughly eight hours per week after further review. The request of the council tonight is to approve the resolution authorizing staff to prepare and submit the grant application based on the request amount provided in the agenda report. If awarded, staff can bring the award back to the council for a final decision on whether to proceed under the grant terms provided. Thank you for listening. That concludes my staff report and I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any, any public comment?
Yes, Your Honor. Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Welcome. And I just wanted to remind you, this is the eve of Earth Day 2001. And I think you should go forward with this, but I implore you to direct the city manager to update the general plan. As you just heard, it's defective in significant ways with regard to hazards to our community. Please support this action, but also at a time, whenever it's appropriate, immediately direct the city manager to update the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Your Honor.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to Ms. Hunter for preparing this and finding this grant opportunity. I very much support it. I think that preparedness for all the different types of elements and safety and fire and the things, the drought that I believe is coming. All of it is very prudent to be looking at. And, you know, I, I think the last thing you stated was, hey, we're going to apply for the grant if we get it. And there's a portion that we have to pay, we still have the opportunity to make that decision as a group on whether we want to go forward with it or not. So I don't see a lot of harm in applying and I'd say aim for the, the highest amount that that is, that you think we could conceivably be awarded. So, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
I see Councilmember Coletti's hand, but I, I just may approve.
Councilmember Coletti.
Well, I raised it so I could second you.
Okay.
I had one question. I do second, but I have one question. And, and does this apply to our parks? Will we get some update in the safety element towards our parks? That's just a quick question. I would say through the mayor that parks in terms of potential hazard mitigation could be addressed as part of the safety element.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Hunter, for your report and, and for looking for state money. I think that's fantastic. And a question, this is, this would be complimentary with the, our long expected wild flower, wild, wildfire prevention plan that Monterey Fire Department has promised us, right? It would work, it would work in tandem. Excellent. While we've got a motion on the floor and a second, may we have a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Tomlinson?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Hi.
Councilmember Pedori?
Hi.
Councilmember McAdams?
Hi.
Councilmember Coletti?
Hi.
Councilmember Emilio?
Hi.
Mayor Peak?
Hi.
Motion carries seven zero.
Well, thank you and, and thanks to all the public that have stayed with us for this meeting. And everyone, please have a safe and good night. Meeting adjourned.